Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regular meeting of the City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency for June 11, 2013. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatts?
Here. If you allow me, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. After me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We don't have any presentations this evening, but I do have an announcement that the city has an opening for the Fiscal Budget Policy Committee, and it's the opening for a public member. And I'll give you a little bit of background, as the council has decided that, in addition to certain staff members and a city council member, we would like to have a member of the public on our budget committee in the spirit of transparency. So the Fiscal Policy Budget Committee is comprised of representatives from the city council, the city treasurer, two members from the city council, the city treasurer, the city manager, and the city finance director. The responsibilities of the Fiscal Policy Budget Committee are to review fiscal issues, trends, and audit findings in detail, and provide appropriate recommendations to the city council. The city council would like to appoint a public member to this committee. The public member must be a resident of Ojai, be able to read and understand budget and financial reports, and be available to meet as needed three or four times per year. The city clerks department is currently recruiting for a public member. If any of the members of the public that are residents of Ojai are interested in applying or would like more information, please contact our city clerk at (805) 646-5581, extension 120, or visit the city's website at www.c.i.Ojai.ca.us/citygovernment/citycommissions. This is really an important appointment that we want to make. While the budget committee only meets three or four times a year, I think it's important that we have a member of the public on that committee, just so that we have someone that other public members can talk to if they have any question over what's happening by staff or any of the elected officials. Next on our agenda is commission reports. Are there any chairs here? Yes. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. You were at the earlier meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers and staff. I'm here to report on the historic preservation upcoming agenda, what we're doing. We're having our meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, and we're having a heritage tree designation workshop, which we're really happy about. We spent a lot of time, we had a great subcommittee identify 16 heritage trees that haven't been designated, 10 of which are in the city of Ojai and six are not. So we're focusing on the 10 that are in the city. And staff has sent letters out to homeowners who have the trees on their property to let them know about the workshop and to let them know that we would like to designate the trees. So that's coming this Thursday. We are also reviewing the project, the Ojai Vineyard Project at the Old Firehouse on Montgomery Street, the design review and the CUP for that. It looks as though they want to do some landscaping and change some windows, so we'll be reviewing that on Thursday. And we're also finalizing our plans, or talking about our plans for Ojai Day. We always have the jail open, and it's been a big hit. We have 600 people, according to Commissioner Rose Boggs, who keeps track of that, but it's been a big hit. So that's the upcoming historic preservation information.
Thank you. Any questions of the council or comments? Thank you, Chair Lloyd.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissions here to report on anything this evening? All right, I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is public comment, and I do have some speakers' cards for public comment. The first card is from Amber Young. Amber?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to take an opportunity to give you a quick, quick update on Ojai Day and let everyone know that the vendor applications are available. So groups and businesses that would like to participate in Ojai Day are encouraged to apply as early as possible. Applications received or postmarked on or before July 15 will receive a 10 percent discount. Applications are due September 2, and any applications that are received or postmarked after that date will be charged a late submission fee. So that's pretty much it.
All right, any questions?
They can be found at www.Ojaiday.com, or you can pick up a hard copy at the Recreation Department or here at City Hall.
Thank you, Amber. Next speaker's card is Cindy Mullins.
I am Cindy Mullins, 1102 Mercer Avenue in Ojai. I represent the Ojai Valley Lavender Festival. Our event this year is on June 29. It's our 10th event in Libby Park. We were recently informed that the Environmental Health Department of Ventura County will no longer approve the facilities in the multipurpose room for food vendor usage in any event in the park, not just ours. What this means to the event holder is that we must rent a quote-unquote "hot sink" for each four food vendors that attend our event. The cost of that is $450 per rental. So we have a minimum usually of one rental of a hot sink for an event. These hot sinks must be within 20 feet of the vendor, according to the environmental health, so that's the reason for having more than one hot sink at events like this. This is not something, it's not a cost that we can pass on to our vendors at the cost of $100 to $150 per vendor. It's something that the festival itself must absorb. So we are petitioning the city council to approve improvements to the multipurpose room in the form of meeting the environmental health county requirements for our multipurpose room. The purpose of the OVLF is to raise money for financial aid, for scholarships for local residents, so they can pursue education that focuses on agricultural practices that are relevant to the Ojai Valley. This is a local thing. We'd much prefer to give our $450 to local residents than to Farmer John's John's or to whoever else we have to rent from. So if the city of Ojai would grant or would consider these improvements to the multipurpose room in the form of hot sinks per the environmental health requirements, we would be happy to have our rental fee for the park with a surcharge on it of $25 to $50 to help pay for this installment, which we think is going to cost around $1,500. With 30 or more events per year in the park that have food vendors, we would pay for this in less than a year. And the surcharge of this nature would certainly be borne by the Ojai Valley Lavender Festival very happily. Thank you for your time and attention for this. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Mullins?
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you. Comments of the council on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Will this be coming up in any way before the city council? Is it on our capital improvements list? Were we even aware of the need?
I wasn't aware of it, but we certainly can look into it and bring it back to you.
I would like to see that. It sounds like it's something that we probably should consider.
What is the multipurpose room? What is the multipurpose room?
I think it's, are you referring to the ticket booth?
The multipurpose room has a sink.
Would you come to the podium so the audience can hear?
Where is the multipurpose room?
Multipurpose room is the ticket booth. At one end where the, whatever they are, those flaps are lifted for the tickets, at the other end, there's a triple sink, but it's one that the Environmental Health Department has always accepted in prior years. For nine years that we've been there, they've always accepted it. This year, they're not going to.
I want to ask a real quick question. Is it not plumbed hot water, or is the sink itself not acceptable because of the size?
The composition of the sink is not acceptable. They want a triple sink. We have a double with a separate one. And yes, they do need hot water. And they did advise us that if we rented one, we had to connect it to drinkable water because not all water in the park is drinkable, which we knew.
Did they also require a hand sink, too? Did they mention that?
We have hand sinks, too, yes. We rent those also, extra ones. All our vendors need these triple sinks, what they call hot sinks.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. My next speaker card is Pete LaFollette.
Pete LaFollette, 999 East Ojai Avenue. Couple of items. First one, oil and fracking in the valley. Oil wells, if any resident here or in the Upper Valley thinks that oil wells are such a good idea, I would suggest that they live in the real sterile area that's between Ventura and Casita Springs where all those oil wells are, because that is the outcome of having oil wells. On fracking, fracking near, on or near geological faults, that's not a proven science in terms of geological stability, so that's very controversial. Second item speaking on tonight is the housing element item that you're speaking about. I come from Whispering Oaks, which is a housing urban development federally funded facility. That configuration is very nice, it's very successful as far as the style of life there. It has a great construction standard. It has terrific operational components and successes, just the way the place was built, and the residents there are very fulfilled. And as far as location, it's a logical progression for this next housing urban development extension of the housing element to be in the back, in the back area where the current Whispering Oaks facility is. Thanks.
Thank you, Pete. That's the only speaker's cards I have for public communication. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Yes, Dale.
Thank you. I'm probably tardy on this. I'm Dale Hanson, I live in the city, but I understand at the last city council meeting that we did not approve all commissioners to live in the city. And I really don't understand. I understand, talking with Scott just now, that one of the comments made was that we need some outside overview of somebody else to see how we look. But if you're going to be making decisions based on what happens in the city, you should live with those decisions and not have someone else make them for you. If it's important to have another view, we could have one member maybe be from outside the city. But I think that all commissioners, perhaps with the exception of Parks and Rec and the Arts Commission, should live in the city, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else wishing to address us on items that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one, let's move on to the consent calendar. We've asked to have one, one public member has asked to speak on item number G on the consent calendar, so I'm going to ask Scott Iker to address us on item G before we take up the vote on the.
Mayor Blatts, I'd also like to pull item 1F. I have an update on the council chair.
1F is pulled, and item G is going to receive public comment. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor Blatts and council. Scott Iker with the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm just really looking for a little explanation here on this. I see that solid waste management is up for a franchise agreement worth about, not to exceed, $15,000. And then point two says that you would authorize the city manager to execute a service agreement with the same company for an amount not to exceed $6,000 to evaluate that same franchise agreement. And I just think, I don't understand why the person who's applying is going to be the one who's going to be evaluating their own application at a cost of roughly 40 percent of their franchise agreement. Just want a little explanation on that if I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Clark?
So Mr. Grant can give you a complete update, but they're not reviewing themselves.
Good evening, again. Yes, the first item is really the Solid Waste Solutions Consulting Firm has been providing support for the AB 939 reporting. As part of that AB 939 requirement that was passed, a state legislature passed, it was, I think they required 50 percent of household recycling would occur by the year 2010. So most cities achieved that goal, and, I'm sorry, this is going back, I think it was 2000, wasn't it? And it was all done, yeah, 2000, so the time passed quick. But anyways, the city of Ojai was not compliant with that, and SWS was hired to help bring the city into compliance and provide all the proper reporting, and they did that successfully. And then, so really, that's the, an annual agreement to provide all the reporting and the outreach and so on that's required and monitoring that's required under the standard annual agreement. As part of the franchise agreement separately, item number two is the franchise agreement provides that we can do an evaluation of the franchise agreement, that we can look into Harrison's books and get a full evaluation of what their performance has been financially and operationally. So that's a separate item for this firm to take a look at the E.G. Harrison's work to evaluate how well they performed over the past years. So it's kind of a way to prepare for the new franchise agreement coming up.
That answer your question, Scott?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item F?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councilmembers, I'd just like to let you know that we did receive the check. I had not received it before the report went out, but we did receive the check from the Environmental Coalition, an amount of $5,900 because they used $100 to purchase something, I believe, for the Ojai Rotary. So I just wanted to update you, and I think Rob Clark also has something.
So, yeah, as part of the action, you should accept the donation. But the other thing, Rhonda, could you describe for the council what is recommended in terms of the chairs that we're purchasing, just so that that's known?
So the chairs we're recommending is actually the chair that Mr. Iker's sitting on, if he wouldn't mind moving over, standing. So it's a little bit wider than the chairs that we have now, but fairly more comfortable than the other chair that's over there with the other gentleman sitting on the corner in the white pants. Yes, oh, there it is. But the cloth, the one Dale's touching, this chair, we're recommending this style of chair only in a cloth, in a fabric upholstery, because we believe that is more upscale. And we're also recommending that chairs be purchased for the dais, and so that everything matches. And hopefully, the two reporters will get nice, comfortable chairs, so.
Question.
Yes.
Have you sat in the executive chairs?
I have one in my office, but it's, the one in my office has more gadgets that you can go up and down, and the one we're recommending is that we, it wouldn't have that many gadgets, so you could be going back and forth and down.
I'm assuming it's comfortable?
Yes.
Because these aren't bad.
Actually, the county just bought a bunch of them. She had several recommendations of the chair that I'm recommending. Or the council could choose to just keep these chairs, and we just purchase chairs for staff, because we want staff to have matching chairs also, in the same line as that chair.
And I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
What were we going to do with the old chairs?
The old chairs, we're going to keep some in the back and stack some over at Public Works for in case we have overflow meetings.
Oh, okay. Because I was going to suggest if we were going to get rid of them, maybe donate them to help of Ojai, or maybe these chairs or something could go to be donated.
I'll check into that.
Somebody that could use them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, since we're talking about these chairs, it was mentioned to me that the museum, the visitor's center, was in dire need of a chair for their desk, so let's keep that in mind if we have an excess one. Let's see if they might be.
Certainly.
Able to use it.
Okay.
Mr. Marley, do you have a comment on this item?
Bill Marley. I think it's important to give a little background on the source of the money, having talked to Pat Baggery recently. The Ventura County Environmental Coalition, it was misstated in the, in the agenda that it was the Ojai Environmental, there isn't any. That the Ventura County Environmental Condition years ago was involved with the planning or critiquing the plans for Las Arboles. And it went to court, and there was a court settlement, and the Ventura County Environmental Coalition was given $6,000. But there was a condition that it had to be given and used to help or improve the city of Ojai. And their board recently met, I'm not on it, and discussed this and decided that it would be a good contribution for the city and public participation to make it a lot more comfortable for people to come to the city council and listen and participate, especially when it went on for hours and hours, and you wouldn't have, you know, kind of numb rear ends. And then there was the consideration that, gosh, the city council people ought to have better chairs, too, so it doesn't happen to them. So that's the source of the money, and I think Ventura County Environmental Coalition needs a, a thank you for that. I wanted lots of people to know about that.
Thank you, Bill. And we do thank the Ventura County Environmental Coalition.
And I have one more question.
Yes.
How comfortable is that chair, Scott?
Fabulous.
Having sat in those chairs that everybody else is in many times, they do get hard.
Oh, they're horrible.
There's no question about it. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Frankly, I find these chairs pretty comfortable. The old ones there are beastly, literally horrible. But if we're only purchasing 50, maybe, my suggestion would be how about purchasing 75 or whatever of those, because if you count the number of people here and the number of chairs, I don't think 50 really covers much. And forego getting, quote, "executive chairs" up here.
These aren't bad.
No, these aren't bad. I don't find these bad at all. Just, you know, a suggestion as to, I mean, those chairs are bloody awful.
Any comments? I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, these chairs are.
I'd rather have the chairs out there than these. These seem to be all right.
This is comfortable, or I'm used to it, one or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor?
A lot more comfortable than those.
Is it okay to purchase chairs for staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Staff, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Anything else on item F of the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, on item D, I don't want to pull it, but I just wanted to say thank you very much for putting the program heading beside the numbers. That made it so much easier for me.
Councilwoman Clapp, item H.
I guess this is for Mr. Grant. Is he still here? Yeah, I have a question about H, Fulton Street Extension. I know that this is a controversial project, and ultimately, it's, there's been an overlay on it. Is there any sort of, I don't know the right word to use. I'm drawing a blank.
Warranty?
What if it, yes, that's the word. What if it doesn't hold?
It's part of the performance bond, there's a one-year warranty bond also, so assuming the council did approve the notice of completion for tonight, then it would be one year from tonight that we'd have a full warranty on the project.
Is that adequate, a year?
It's standard for construction projects. It's a standard state regulation.
Is it a standard for an overlay?
Now, this project was all new asphalt for that roadway.
Uh-huh.
So that was, it's, it's standard for almost any kind of construction out there.
Okay, so there is a warranty?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No. All right, and I am going to pull item I. So we've almost talked about everything on the consent calendar tonight, which isn't a bad thing. But I wanted to, item I has to do with the appointments to our Ojai Commissions, and I want members of the public to realize that our commissioners serve at, totally volunteer. And as they come up for, they serve for a particular term, and it used to be that when their terms came up, that any sitting council or commissioner would automatically be reappointed for a similar term. And last year, the council put into place a procedure in which even those sitting commissioners whose terms expired would come before the mayor and the mayor pro tem and the chairman of the commission for an interview and to seek reappointment. And it served an excellent, and it's actually served an excellent purpose on two fronts. The first thing is, is that they come before us, so it's not an automatic renewal, and in some cases, if we wish to replace that commissioner, it gives us the vehicle to do that. But more importantly, it's the only time when an individual commissioner really has an opportunity to sit down face-to-face with the mayor and the mayor pro tem and the chair and discuss anything and everything with regard to the operation of the, of the commissions, and things that that particular commissioner would like to see happen, or any ideas that that particular commissioner may have. And I know I can speak for Mayor Pro Tem Strobel, that I and she have absolutely enjoyed the process of speaking with those commissioners that are up for reappointment, that are seeking reappointment. So thank you very much, and I think that process absolutely should continue. So with that, I would like to announce that as far as the Arts Commission, for a term to end on May 31, 2015, Christine Golden, who's the current chair of that commission, and Michael Addison are both going to be reappointed for their, for their positions on the Arts Commission.
Are they here?
Are you either of them here? I don't believe so. For the Historic Preservation Commission, Jolene Lloyd, who is the current chair of that commission, Patricia Clark Donner, who I had, who I have seen is here, and Rose Boggs, who I don't believe is here, are all going to be reappointed for a term to end on May 31, 2015 on the Historic Preservation Commission. So thank you, Patricia, for wanting to serve again, and for the other members as well. And Jolene, thank you for your assistance and professionalism in being the chair for that committee, commission. As, there were other people that were up for the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to end on May 31, 2015. Randy Haney, the current chair of that commission, is recommended for reappointment. Sage Entner is being recommended. Dwayne Basor is asked to be re-upped, and Austin Becker, who's our youth position on that commission, are all being recommended to be reappointed. And I want to thank Councilwoman Smith, who helped Mayor Pro Tem in interviewing for the Planning Commission, and the selection of that individual is a new person to replace a, someone currently on the Planning Commission that has, is leaving and going out of town. And this individual is here, so if you'd like to come forward. His name is Orville Osborne. Thank you very much for offering to serve, Mr. Osborne. I didn't have a chance to meet with you because I had a conflict in the interviewees on that commission, so as I said, it was Mayor Pro Tem Strobel and, I mean, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Strobel and Councilwoman Smith that did the interviews, and I can tell you that they both reported back that they were very impressed by you. So thank you very much. Did you have anything that you'd like to say to us?
I just wanted to thank you. I look forward to serving this city on this capacity. I love the city.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Osborne comes from San Luis Obispo, so he's new to. Our city, but he has served as the Planning Commission in San Luis Obispo and is their chair. He's also led the update on the housing element and for their general plan. He reviewed residential and commercial developments, including EIRs and annexations, and he handled appeals of staff decisions, Mass Transit Commission, and all for the city of San Luis. So he, we're very lucky to have him and welcome. He's been only in Ojai three years, but he comes with terrific experience in planning. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And I live in the city.
All right. Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're a very brave man.
All right. I think that completes our discussion on the consent calendar, so I will entertain a motion. And let the, let item F in that motion reflect that we are accepting the funds very graciously given to us by the Ventura County Environmental Coalition.
With the modified, about the executive chairs, do we need to modify the, what we're purchasing as well?
That'd be a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's. So should we pull it and have it as a separate motion?
I think it can be modified as part of this motion.
Okay. Okay. So the modified motion includes acceptance of the money from the Ventura County Environmental Coalition and the, that's item F. And the chairs, which is item, which item is that?
F also.
F. Okay, F also. It's going to be modified for the direction to staff, not to replace the executive chairs for the council and the commissions, but rather put whatever's been, monies have been associated with, with those purchases, to purchase additional chairs for the public. Okay?
But also purchase executive chairs for staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, new, new chairs for staff.
Yeah, just the ones for, yeah. Yes, that's correct. Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. All right, moving on now to the next part of our agenda, which is public hearings. I'm going to move item four, because I'd like to accommodate Mr. Smigel, who's here, and we're going to move that to the top of the public hearing agenda. And this is a time extension for design review permit and tentative parcel map for a four-unit mixed-use condominium project and an associated tree permit for property located at 119 and 201 South Montgomery Street. Mr. Clark, Mr. Mulane, who's going to, Mr. Mulane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council members and the public. This is a, a public hearing for a time extension on this project. This was a project that was approved by the city council back in May of 2009, and it was for a design review permit, a tentative parcel map, and a tree permit for the demolition of two single-family residential structures and the construction of a four-unit mixed-use condominium project. And the city council last saw this project about a year ago, where you granted a, a one-year time extension to Mr. Smigel. The current entitlements are set to expire, or were set to expire, rather, on May 26, 2013, and the applicant is, is requesting an additional one-year extension for the entitlements to secure financing and initiate work. And Mr. Smigel does note that the, and this is no surprise to the council, the local economy has improved substantially, and that's created more opportunities for obtaining the financing that's needed. So he's optimistic that he is going to be able to move forward with this one-year time extension. All the project components and conditions of approval would continue to apply should the time extension be granted. And I have attached a resolution approving the time extension for your consideration as attachment A, as well as Mr. Smigel's extension request as attachment B. And Mr. Smigel kindly came here tonight, just in case there's any questions from the council. But again, this is a project that you're familiar with. You last saw this a year ago, and we're all optimistic that it's going to be able to move forward this calendar year, or this, this, this next 12-month period, rather.
Any questions by the council of staff? Mr. Smigel, do you have anything to offer?
I'm certainly willing to answer any questions. I think it's the approval...
Can you step to the side, please?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no. We can...
That's all right.
Just talk loud and... There you go.
There we go.
Thank you very much. Scott Smigel. As Mr. Mulan said, the approval was May of 2009. My brother, who's my partner, passed away in August of 2009. He was more or less the driving force. The economy is self-explanatory. My brother died intestate, and this property was part of a probate and estate issue and an audit, which wasn't completed until this year, 2013. So now with title matters clear, estate matters clear, and the economy beautifully rebounding, again, I am optimistic that we can move forward. And I certainly appreciate previous consideration by the council moving, moving the extension, or granting the extension.
Thank you, Scott. It's nice to see you. Any questions of Mr. Smigel?
No, I have a question of staff.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Clapp?
This, refresh my memory, it was, it was approved what, what year again? 2000?
2009.
2009, okay. I have a question. Since this was approved, MS 4 was passed, so the stormwater laws have changed in the state of California. So how would that impact this project if we were to extend it?
Well, it would be subject to the new requirements, because the building permits have not been issued yet for that, for this, this project. So it's not vested with respect to stormwater control.
Okay. And would it also be the case with any sort of new lighting standards that would be coming down from the state in first of next year?
If, the ones that are coming down through the building code, yes. The trigger is building permit issuance. So as it goes through the building plan check, it would have to comply with the, with all the latest requirements.
So any, any requirement like that would have to be accommodated with, within the new, within the construction?
Any change to the building code would, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? No? I'll entertain a motion then. Or is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yeah, Bill?
Throughout the entire time we discussed the housing element, cycle four, we talked about affordability. And if I remember correctly, there's something in there that says if you remove affordable dwellings to build condominiums, that you must accommodate in some way the loss of the affordable units. And I would like to ask what was done when it was approved in 2009 to meet that? Do you understand?
Do you understand, Mr. Mulan?
I do understand the question. However, I was not here, so perhaps the applicant can speak to that. There's been different city staff involved here. But this is a, a change that was just recently adopted as part of our housing element. Now, obviously, the project needs to comply with new building code requirements, but there are certain other aspects of the project that are, that are vested in the, in the entitlements, the city entitlements. So I, I don't have all the details on the affordable, the affordability of the units that are proposed for demolition, or obviously, that was before my time.
Well, the, Scott, maybe you could come forward again. Weren't the units already demolished?
My recollection is that they were condemned by the city, and their demolition was ordered by the city.
That's my recollection as well. Okay, thank you. Any thoughts, Mr. Clark, on that? If, if the current scheme of things is that if you're going to be taking affordable housing inventory out of circulation and replace it, that there needs to be some affordable component of that?
I guess, I guess there's a, a legal question as to the standing of the current approval and our ability to change the current approval.
A couple of things. I mean, if, this project was entitled with its land use approvals of the map and everything before the current housing element was adopted, so it doesn't, it's not subject to this current one. Anything that's new in that? There's another question also, in terms of replacing affordable units, I think it's a question whether we're talking about income-restricted affordable units or just units that are at affordable rates per the market. And then I thought we were talking more about the issue about taking income-restricted affordable units off, off the inventory as opposed, I'm not, pause about that, but it's in, as opposed to simply taking a, a market unit, a unit which is affordable under market rates. I don't know if you refer to that. But any event, that wouldn't, wouldn't, this project was entitled with its land use approvals and its map prior to the current housing element that were just adopted. So anything in this one wouldn't be applicable. So it, so it would be based upon the conditions of approval, and it should be reflected in the conditions of approval of the, of the land use entitlements, the map and all that. It's where you would find any restrictions upon provisions of affordable, new affordable units. And we're talking about aid, yeah, at that point, income-restricted affordable units. And I don't think that is the case with these entitlements.
Okay. Councilwoman Clapp, did you have a question?
Well, it's just interesting, because the city demolished the units.
I think they'll probably, in my court, they've been demolished. The, the property is now vacant, but pursuant to, I guess, a city...
They got condemnation by the city prior to or after the Smigel's purchased the property.
Well, I think they were, the Smigel's were the owners of the property at the time that we ordered, it's not that we didn't amit domain, we used, I guess, through a code enforcement action, required them to be demolished because they were non-habitable. So I, I mean, it's a question, would you count them in as affordable, you know, and we go back to '09, not the current housing element. So the idea of trying to capture them back into an affordable inventory today, when they were last occupied, whether they were affordable, met any affordability, market affordability requirements, is very difficult to determine. And I'd be, my opinion, that if there's nothing, if there's nothing specific in the entitlements granted that requires them to, to income-restrict any of these units, I don't think we have the ability at this point, other than not, other than to deny the extension and require the entire process, project to be reprocessed.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one thing to that. So then the new regulations that are part of the phase two of the housing element that just took action on, also has an express exemption for the replacement housing provisions for units that have been declared as a public nuisance under provisions of Division 13 of the Health and Safety Code. So there's, there's an exemption for units that are condemned for health and safety reasons. And so even if these, these regulations were on the books back in 2009, when the project was approved, it would, it would qualify for this exemption.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? No? Any other people in the public wanting to speak on this? I don't have any other speaker's cards. No? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing then.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to close the public hearing.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? No one? All right, further discussion by the council?
Well, I don't have any concerns, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I move to give the time extension for design review permit and tentative parcel map for a four-unit mixed-use condominium project and associated tree permit for property located at 119 and 201 South Montgomery Street.
Adopt resolution number...
And adopt resolution number 13 dash...
Point two.
Two, approving a time extension for design review permit.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. Good luck, Mr. Smigel. Nice to see you again.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we're going to go back to the item number two under public hearings. This is a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We're anticipating the council will be adopting a budget for fiscal year 13, 14 at your next meeting on June 25. And the purpose of this public hearing tonight is it's another opportunity for you to receive input from the public on issues related to the budget. We know that over the course of the past month or so, you've spent quite a bit of time on the budget. We reviewed council goals at the May 14 meeting. We got, we spent time with the Planning Commission, receiving input from them, also the May 14 meeting. The Arts Commission addressed you at the May 28 meeting. The Historical Preservation Commission addressed you at the June 11 meeting. And the Parks and Recreation Commission gave you input as part of the discussion of reorganization of that department. You also had workshops on both the 14th and the 28th, looking at each of the departments in more detail. And you have an item later on the agenda tonight to discuss the museum and their request for funding. And then you held a closed session on the 28th to discuss matters relating to employee compensation. So you've had quite a bit of input. As that input has come in, we've taken notes, and your task on the 28th will be to somehow work your way through all the issues that have come up and adopt a budget.
Thank you. Any questions of staff, comments of council? No?
I have a, a question for staff. For attachment A, it says, could we just clarify exactly how much the Historical Preservation Commission is asking for?
So it's, it's, in addition to what they, what's already proposed in the budget, they're asking for $1,960 for training and education, $1,200 for landmark plaques, and we indicated that we'll also come up with a revenue estimate to offset some of that, and $1,200 for printing assets. So it'd be the sum of those three numbers.
Okay, so we are keeping the landmark plaques there.
My recommendation would be to keep the landmark plaques, but we will change our revenue assumption to assume that we'll receive some fees to cover a portion of those.
And those fees would be associated only with those projects that were requesting Mills Act benefits?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. I don't have any speaker's cards on this agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, I'll bring it back to council for either comments or a motion.
And actually, we don't need a motion at this particular time, but we would appreciate any comments council has on budget beyond those that you've already given us.
Okay. Any further input to give to Mr. Clark? No? All right, we'll move on to item number three. Public hearing on proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2013, 14. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. As part of the budget process, we're also reviewing our fees on an annual basis, and we provided a summary as attachment A that lists fees that we've proposed be changed. Many of the changes occur in the Community Development Department, and part of the effort there is to take into consideration proportionality of fees to the cost of various projects that are coming forward. So we're actually proposing lower fees for signs and lower fees for minor conditional use permits and other things that we believe will encourage people to come in and get the permits that we need, and we believe the fees will be more reasonable, given the , the cost of those particular projects. We also have a number of changes to the recreation fees, and Mr. McClary is here tonight, if you have any questions on those. And then we are proposing on a trial basis, the idea of trying to encourage artistic and musical performances in the public and private places around the downtown area. So there's a $50 fee for use of public spaces for a season for that type of use, and there's a $50 fee for a temporary use permit if someone wanted to do something on their own property. Many resort communities try and encourage things that activate their town, make it more interesting, and draw more people. And so it's a, it's a trial program to see if that works. So we would be glad to answer any questions you may have on fees.
Okay. Any questions of staff by the council? Commissioner Laura?
I'll, we'll head council in no trouble.
I'm skipping back to the budget, but I just want to make sure that we include in our budget funds for the multipurpose building to make sure that our sinks meet county code.
I, I took note of that when that came up. Thank you.
So many events. Yeah.
Councilman Laura?
I had a question for Ms. McClary about the fee structure for the Zarozody Park, the large picnic area. I just need some clarification why we want to remove those fee and, versus not removing the medium picnic area.
So the recreation staff and I discussed this, and in the current fee schedule, there is actually a different fee for picnic area one and picnic area two. We're proposing that there be the same fee for both areas. It's relatively the same amount of work to prepare, to maintain, and to clean up afterwards. And we, we felt that it was just a little easier and cleaner on the fee schedule. Essentially, the current fee schedule has, oh, I grabbed the wrong stack. The current fee schedule has the large picnic area, and there's a processing fee of $20 per day. per day. And it's a $30 nonprofit fee and a $40 general fee. And then for the medium picnic area two, under the current schedule, again, it's a $20 processing fee, a $19 nonprofit fee, and a $30 general fee. What we're proposing is to put that all as one fee, use of picnic area one or two. So we're no longer calling the larger the small, just one and two. We're reducing the processing fee from $20 to $10. But then the use fee is going up for the large picnic area, which would be number one. It's, it's going from 30 to 40 and 40 to 50 for the nonprofits and the general fee respectively. And then there's also a, a new fee in there right now for the use of electricity, which is not established right now in the fee schedule. Right now, if folks want to use electricity, they pay the same amount as, as folks who do not use electricity. So hopefully that has answered the question.
Yeah, that answers, that answers my question.
Any other questions, Commissioner Laura? No?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilwoman Clapp?
On number, Mr. Clark, just real quick, is the numbered nine a yearly fee?
A seasonal fee.
Seasonal, the season being?
Fifty dollars for like, for the summer season or the fall season.
So quarterly?
One quarter, yeah.
Quarterly. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Or, I'm so sorry, hang on a second. Or when you say special event art, would that?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's for a temporary use permit. So a temporary use permit would, would more likely be a shorter period of time. I, I was thinking of the, the fee for, for music in public places.
Okay, I'm confused. And so where is that located on this? I'm confused.
So where it says 47, there's a facility use permit downtown area for seasonal music and entertainment.
Oh, there it is.
That's, that's, that's $50 per season. That's what I was referring to.
And that season being quarterly?
That would be quarterly.
Quarterly. And what if somebody wants to, so the art one is per event?
Right. Because it's a temporary use permit, and it would have the same timeframes as any other temporary use permit.
Which would be?
Usually just a few days.
Few days.
An event.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. Anything else? No? Any other comments by council? This is a public hearing. I do have one speaker's card. Scott Eiker?
Good evening. Scott Eiker with the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. I've had a couple of conversations with Rob Mullane about this, and I'm really pleased to see that a lot of these fees have been decreased. I guess my, my one concern is the fee that I'm going to use was increased, but I guess that's just kind of the way the cards fall. Particularly the, the downtown temporary art event and the facilities use being dropped to $50 per season, I think is really great. It's going to allow downtown merchants to have their events, their backyard sales, and other things at a lower cost. And I presume, I'm presuming that these costs apply to the Arcade Plaza area. Yes? Okay. And I think now that there is a requirement for an insurance policy to go along when they, when they utilize that. Will that stand?
Yes, that does. That, that's a requirement that's passed down to us from the insurance authority. So yes, it will.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say, and thanks for raising my fee, Rob.
It's the way the ball passes.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? No? Then I'll entertain a, a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to close the public, public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'll bring it back to council for, for comment.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interject briefly? There were a couple sign permit fees that after the, the booklet was put together, staff is, has reconsidered and is recommending making some changes. And those aren't in your booklet, and they're not reflected correctly on this attachment A. So just for the record and for, for clarity, staff is not recommending at this time any increase to the sign permit for banner signs or temporary signs, nor for regular sign permits. So currently, a banner sign permit is $90, and staff would recommend that it remain $90. On a similar note, a regular sign permit is $120, and staff recommends that it, it remain at $120, unlike as it's shown on this attachment A and in your booklet. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's, that staff's recommendation is clear to the council on that.
Okay. Any comments? Councilwoman Smith?
I was at the Art Center last night for an event, and it was pointed out to me that they have a, like, a canvas sign that's considered a banner. It's usually advertised, it's, it's made for each individual show. But someone commented that that's illegal by our city standards, and I wasn't sure if that was, it's not very big, but it's a rectangle. I wasn't sure what, what they were alluding to.
Yeah, I can comment on that. I have put, I have an agenda item on our, on our June 28th meeting to address that issue. Because currently, it is, it is illegal. I believe you're allowed to have four, you're allowed to have a temporary banner for four weeks. And no more than four times a year.
That's correct.
Right, and they have more shows. So it's before us on the 28th.
So we will address it.
We will address it. Any other comments? All right, do you have enough input?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. And we'll make the corrections that Mr. Mullane alluded to before we bring this back on the 25th.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our discussion items, the first discussion item is item number five, the Ojai Valley Museum funding request. And this is a request that has come to us by the Ojai Valley Museum. And it's nice to see Ann Scanlon here, the director, and, and a number of people that sit on the board of the museum here this evening as well. So we're going to be, I believe, having a presentation, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Clark.
Well, I think since, since they did have an opportunity to make a presentation at a previous meeting, I'll just review our analysis of their request. So just to remind you that there's two parts to the request. One part is that there is some damage to the structure of the building relating to water intrusion and so forth and termites. And we believe the cost, at our best estimate, to repair that is about $25,000. And the current lease makes them responsible for the interior and us responsible for the exterior, but they're asking that we cover that cost. And in fact, in the capital improvement budget that Mr. Grant went through you, through with you earlier, we did propose to cover that cost. The second part has to do with their operating budget. And we did request quite a bit of additional information beyond that which was presented to you when they made their pitch at a previous meeting. And then after analyzing it ourselves, we sat down with members of the museum and went through it in detail. And basically, we believe that the museum has a $50,000 structural deficit, which means that on an ongoing basis, their predictable ongoing revenues are $50,000 less than their $50, than their expenditures. Last year, their losses were actually about $60,000. The prior year, they broke even, but the only reason they broke even was because they received a $50,000 bequest when someone passed away. And so they used that one-time money for operating expenses, which is not ideal. The previous year, they booked a loss, I think, of about $22,000. But in, but in order to keep the loss at that level, they actually sold some artwork that didn't really apply to the Ojai Valley and received $18,000 of income from that sale. So again, they used one-time revenues to, to cover their losses. And then in the two preceding years, they had a vacancy in the director position, and they ran the museum without a director, using entirely volunteer efforts. And we asked, well, gee, that sounds like a good thing. Do you want to do that again? And I, and I think it's, it's an overwhelming thing that, it's really a full-time job that volunteers can't do. So unless they're able to discover new revenue sources, and they have ideas about new revenue sources that may have some potential, but unless they're able to do that, they have this structural deficit. And so we've recommended that it be funded. We did receive money a number of years ago from the sale of some property on Drown, $47,000, and we recommend that as the primary source to cover the operating budget this year. And then they've indicated their willingness to try some of these new ideas for generating revenue to see if they can bring the deficit down or eliminate it in future years.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any comments or questions by the council? No?
Well, I do.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Strobl?
I'm, I'm really glad that our city manager is recommending the additional support that the museum needs. The museum is very important to the community, and we should all maybe do a little more to support our museum because it is unique. Having said that nice thing, the only thing that, that keeps catching my attention is when you physically go to the museum, the visitor's center is one door, one room, and even though there is a door that joins, it's basically isolated from the museum. You would have to leave the visitor's center and go to another door to go into the museum. I would like, I would like the museum to consider a more inclusive arrangement. It seems to me if, if our visitors, if there was some way to arrange it so our visitors, when they were getting information, were also exposed to the museum, that they maybe would be more inclined to visit the museum and encourage participation with both. And so that was.
Okay. Any other comments? This is a discussion item, and I have several speakers cards. Yes, Ann, you want to come forward?
Well, I think our director, Michelle Prese, would like to speak.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Dangerous chairs, too.
Hi, Michelle. Hi.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Michelle Prese, and I'm the director of the Ojai Valley Museum. As you well know, I've been there three and a half years now. And the problem with the visitor's center and the museum having adjoining doors is that we have to have separate entrances for separate businesses. And tourism really is a separate business from the museum business. So they have to be distinctly different, or I cannot get certain kinds of grants that require that the visitor's center be treated as a tourist situation. Now, all of our volunteers in the visitor's center know to send people down the path. We have guest passes. If somebody doesn't feel like they want to spend the money and that's voiced, then we give them a guest pass, and we invite them to come down to the museum. And a lot of people who come to Ojai to use the visitor's center aren't museum people. They're not museum goers. So it really works out very well right now. We did build a wall with the city permission so that it is its own entity, although the people who man the visitor's center are museum volunteers, and they work with me on a daily basis. Andy Bloom, who runs the visitor's center on a volunteer basis, works with me daily. We just brought the Ojai Valley Inn concierge in today because we had, I had friends who were staying at the inn who said they asked about the museum and nobody knew anything about it. So I talked to Andy, and she called the concierge, and she came down in her own free time for a tour. So there's a lot of give and take, but I really do have to keep the two entities distinctly separate in the building. That's your question?
Perhaps, and there may be something there already. If not, maybe we could put a sign in the visitor's center, please visit our museum next door.
Sure.
Something, something to more connect the two.
Right. And when we do our publicity for any of our exhibits, we mention that the visitor's center is part of our building. And the signage on the street near Caro's says the visitor's center is right there. And the Sculpture Garden now really cements our building as the museum. Our banners do somewhat of a, a good job, but that'll come up at the next meeting.
And I went through your, the brochure that you provided, that was provided for council.
Mm-hmm.
And in the brochure, which has bullet points on, on attributes.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see, well, I think I did.
Is this the one sheet that was inserted into the brochure?
Well, it was several sheets. But what I'm getting at is I would like to see mention, more mention of the visitor's center.
Okay.
Because my concept is a closer union between the two. And I understand that the museum and the visitor's center need to be separate. But I would still like a little more exchange between the two. And I didn't notice it in, in this brochure.
Well, on the membership brochure, we don't have a museum brochure. It's, it's not, it's going to be redesigned. And we had one three years ago that Rotary helped. Oh, that's the visitor's center signage, I think.
Well, it says, "Ojai Valley Museum History and Art."
Okay. Well, our museum brochure, I don't have a packet with me, but it's bright yellow. And the back of it is all about business membership and, and the visitor's center. And Andy Bloom is sitting in the visitor's center. We've had articles in the paper.
Okay, I see it.
Okay. We're very, very good about it, really. And I, I also want to reiterate, that you may not be aware of, that we have separate types of volunteers. We have about 100 volunteers that believe in us and work with us basically as staff. And the docents used to have visitor's center information in the lobby to the museum entrance. And it aggravated them terribly, that they were being asked all the time, where should they eat lunch? When, they were really there to promote the exhibits and the museum and talk about the history of the town. So theirs is an educational volunteer effort, whereas the visitor's center is much more social, and it's really for the fabric of the community. And they are totally different businesses, basically, under one roof. And so we're trying to marry them in the best way we can, and yet keep everybody happy most of the time.
All right. I would also ask that in the lease agreement, the amended and restated lease agreement, that you reread or pay special attention to page two, the section that, that outlines what the museum has agreed to do.
Right.
And it, you know, train employees to answer questions. It doesn't make that separation in the lease agreement.
Right. The lease agreement's pretty vague in some areas, and we would like to make it more specific.
And since we're having a conversation.
Yes.
You are members of the Chamber of Commerce, correct?
Yes, we are.
I would like to see an open house, a chamber open house held at the museum.
It's, it's scheduled for next October, or this October. It's this October, we're having a mixer at the museum. And I'm now speaking to the chamber at breakfast, and I'm hopefully doing it at the dinner event. And we've made invitations to the chamber members, both to become business members of the museum, but to use our facility free of charge. And so the conversation is just building.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions of the director? No? This is a discussion, discussion item, and I do have three speakers card, Ann, the, the president of the museum. Do you have, I didn't have a speaker's card for me. Do you have anything in particular you'd like to say?
Well, I think Michelle answered your question very well.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strobl. I also wanted to say that even though we have to keep the visitor's center separate from the museum, we are so limited in space, there is no way we could have it part of our museum. It's, it's called museum creep, and that's not recommended for museums. Museums generally don't have a visitor's center, but because our, our lease requires that we have a visitor's center, that's why it's there. As I said, we, we really would like to have more room, build on another building someday. But until we get financially stable, that's probably not going to happen. That's not realistic. So I, I just wanted to make sure that you understand that we don't have room for visitor's center within the museum. That's really not a good idea, anyway. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Clark for spending an hour with museum representatives, clarifying our problem and some of the things we hope to do about it. And also for the council for coming for your tours and seeing what we do and how we do it, and our dreams for the future. So thank you so much for this consideration.
Thank you, Ann. All right, the first speakers, do you have a comment?
Just a final comment, maybe. I, I just wanted to encourage our citizens and our residents of the valley to not only visit our museum, to see what such a small community is offering, but also to strongly encourage that we maybe increase our donations if we're already making a donation to the museum. museum, because it is a service to the community, and I'd like to see the community support it. Thank you.
Also, become members of the museum. I think that's very helpful. The more membership they have, it's better for their grant applications, et cetera, so... How much is membership now? I don't remember, Ann, is it...
Well, I'll mention that the membership fee is very low, or it seems very low to me, so I didn't even think to mention that.
Well, there's a lot, you can be a supporter for $250, you can be a donor for $500. So you choose, you know, we've tried to cover all the, all the communities so people can afford.
Would you repeat that at the desk so the people at home can hear?
Maybe give all of the, the levels of membership.
Well, we try to have a variety of memberships so that people that are not able to have a larger membership, we have a $40 individual, and we have, it has perks, free admission for one adult, 10% discount in the museum store. You get the museum newsletter, and you get one single-use guest pass. So we try to have perks for every single membership category. Then we have a $60 dual-family membership that has much of the same, but we increase some of the things. There's a $100 associate membership, which also gives you the benefit of the North American Reciprocal Museum program. And there are hundreds of museums across the country that if you belong to the Ojai Valley Museum, you go to there, and if they're a NARM member, then you get in free. So there's a lot of perks for the $100 associate. Then there's a $250 supporter, and you get all the other benefits of the other categories. You can rent the facility, the museum facility, for private events, and you get single, six single-use guest passes. And then the $500 donor is, all of those, you just get more of whatever is provided in the, the earlier categories. So there's something there for everybody, and we try to make it nice for people to get a benefit from not just belonging to the museum, which is a huge benefit in itself, but we try to get some, some incentives for them to, to change their membership to a higher level to get more of the benefits. Thank you for encouraging people to join the museum and to, to support it, because that's how we make, that's why we aren't doing so well financially, because people in the community don't seem to support us. You know, they'll come in, and they'll enjoy the museum, and you give them a brochure, say, gee, we'd like you to be a member, and they're going, well, maybe later, or they'll take it home, and well, they'll never see it again. We'd like to make them join the museum before they went out the door, but that's not going to happen, obviously. So thank you for encouraging people to do that. That would help our budget situation a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Any other comments? No. All right. This is a discussion item, and I do have three public speaker's cards, and the first one's from Roger Conrad.
I'm Roger Conrad from the Arts Commission, and there's basically two commissions that are really interested in the museum, like many of the trustees of the museum are also on the Historical Preservation Commission. The Arts Commission also has quite a bit of interest in the museum, and you've had prior presentations by some of the museum trustees that kind of outlined the historical aspects, but I'd like to talk about the value to the arts community. One of the things that we have in the museum is a nonprofit gallery, and nonprofit galleries are incredibly important to communities because they can allow you to have art that isn't financially viable, you know, like maybe cutting-edge that hasn't really established itself in commercial types of galleries. You can also have culturally enriching things that are not for sale, say like collections that might come into the museum, and we can present those, but they're obviously not for sale. There's also installation art that generally either needs to be funded on the outside or an artist has an impulse to want to have a space to actually make an installation out of the gallery in some way. So it'd be one artist reshaping the entire space. And then it's also an exposure for emerging artists. And then also, these special events can then be a magnet to encourage more traffic through the local private galleries in addition to that, and also the restaurants and everything else that comes on. So it has quite a bit of benefit, and most communities have the same nonprofit galleries. Ojai actually has three of them, and I'm actually involved in all three. The first one I'll mention is the oldest, which is the Art Center, and the Art Center has a kind of multipurpose area. They have a gallery which is used to put things on the wall, but they also have dance classes, they have literary events, they have lectures, and people can rent the facility. It excludes the possibility of having sculpture in the area, and there's certainly no way they could dedicate it to an installation art. There is also the problem of, with all these other things occurring there, that you can't actually have people seeing the artwork all the time, and everything being a multipurpose, it's kind of a lot of things. So it's a very valuable facility, but it doesn't give you the full extent of the artistic presentation that you, you could have. City Gallery is another one, which the Arts Commission is very much involved with, and we have the pictures in here, and of course, throughout the other rooms. But this also has limitations. We can't deal with sculpture very well. Occasionally, we can put some things on the mantelpiece, or we have a little niche out in the hallways that we sometimes present things, but we can't really do that. Also, the hours are very restrictive in that it's only open during business hours for the city, so that's kind of a disadvantage. The museum is actually a premier gallery. It's actually one of the best galleries in the entire Ventura County. It's really a gem, and it has complete control, it has security, it has an incredible staff, docents, a board that's very supportive of the things that we do there. So it's really a very special place and a real gem in this valley, and something that, you know, would be a real loss to the arts community if, if that didn't succeed. The museum started originally as a repository for historical matters, but in recent years, we've expanded it to be involved with various art shows. And this is kind of a, a mix that becomes financially quite viable in that you have historians, history buffs, and art lovers basically working in the same thing. And being that the arts are such an important part of the Ojai Valley, that it really is a beautiful kind of mix, because art is both historical and ongoing and new. One thing that I've already mentioned to some degree, that this can be a draw for out-of-town people. And just an example, in 2006, we had Trimpin, who did the sound arch at the Bowl, he came in and we dedicated the entirral gallery to an installation, and basically, it was 12 towers with horns. There was like 60 horns that went on, and people could actually come in and play this instrument, and then they also had concerts. This was in collaboration with the Music Festival. We had 8,000 people through the museum during the run of that particular show. And then more recently, in 2012 and 2013, with the curatorial of Michelle that you've already met, she put together two outstanding shows, one being American Glassworks, which was really outstanding, really unusual collection of basically types of glass art that is really an emerging art form right now. We had 5,000 people that came through the museum at that time. And more recently, just this year, we had Fine Arts Masterpieces, which is more than just little needlework. She had really amazing capistrates and clothing and paper clothing and all sorts of things. Again, another 5,000 people. So this museum can really become a draw for the community, and if you read the reviews that we have in our little guestbook, people are really blown away to come to this small, out-of-the-way place and have this kind of style of artwork. And right now, we're working on our new show, which I'll give a little kick to get you to come see it. It's called Ojai Collects, and this is going to be a total mix of different types of things. We're going to have ethnic art, we're going to have Western art, we're going to have some amazing modern art by people that are world famous that will be in here, and we're also going to have Disney memorabilia. There's going to be eight collectors, and this will broaden the spectrum of people involved in the museum, because there are a lot of amazing collections, and we're probably going to do more of these shows in the future, which also can be a chance to get funding and all that. So anyway, thank you for your support, and I appreciate you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Roger. Pat Clark, donor. Hi, Pat.
Hello, Mayor Blatz and commissioners and staff. I am speaking on behalf of Old Tom Clark, who died in 1911. It was he who donated the land for the first Catholic church in Ojai, and that is the land that the museum stands on. He also donated the money for the pews, and he also donated the rectory. The first church was a wooden structure that burned to the ground in one of the great fires of 1917. Fortunately, by that time, Edward Libby had come to town, and he proposed that the new church be built with the new style that had been introduced to the downtown city of Ojai. Richard Requa was the, was hired to design the structure. The final mass was set in St. Thomas Aquinas Church, January 2nd, 1993. Escrow closed on the purchase of the chapel by the city of Ojai, October 1993. After extensive renovation, the museum began moving from the old firehouse to the new Ojai Valley Museum in 1995. Now, it's thanks to the hard work of these pioneers and wealthy visitors to the Ojai that we have this wonderful structure that is one of the jewels, I think, of the Ojai Valley, and what they do is so valuable, and I'm so glad that we have a paid director now. I thought that the volunteers were going to collapse under the pressure of running the place on their own, certainly, Ann Scanlon. I'm sure that you all know it's Ojai Historic Landmark Number Seven, and also placed on the National Register of Historic Places. Tony Thatcher wrote a wonderful piece on the rationale, the, while this is more of an emotional appeal, I suppose, I can think of nothing more that would please Old Tom Clark than having the museum do what it's doing, and it deserves funding from the city of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Michelle, I had a card from you as well.
I would just like to thank the council. I feel that we have a renaissance going on right now of a relationship, finally, in recent years, of the museum and the people who run the city of Ojai, and the people who run the public works, and we finally have a dialogue, and you've heard us, our board invited you in, we've been honest, and I know, as the person who's there every single day, and who is responsible for writing the grants, and who is responsible for the earned income avenues that the museum does avidly set up and does help us with our support, that to be able to tell people that the city of Ojai does support us with funding, does help us with our facility, is only going to make our future brighter. I know that I can now add that to my plate, I can use it as a tool, I can romance our place even better with your badge of honor that I hope you will pin on us, and I will honorably carry your faith in us forth, as far as I can take it. So I want to thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? All right, I'll bring you back to council. Comments? Yes?
I have a lot of thoughts here, and they're squirreled all over. So I'm going to, I'm going to try my best to be as clear as possible. This is about, it's a lot about priorities and what's important to our community. That's what I'm gleaning from all of this. And I'm reflecting, because we're talking about budgets, about where we have been willing to subsidize in our community for certain things. And one of the things the council has taken as a high priority has been subsidizing the Recreation Department, which we've subsidized between $400,000, $500,000 per year from the general fund. In our policies and procedures of the city of Ojai, one of our policies is that we're supposed to be break even with the Recreation Department, but because we felt it was an important thing for the community, we've always been willing to subsidize it. Clearly, a large amount of money. Another thing that we've felt we've always wanted to subsidize because we felt it was important to the community was the trolley, and that as well has been subsidized. Some years, it's almost $400,000 or more. And it's a priority. So my next question is, is the museum a priority? And I would have to say it absolutely is. Our history is one of the most important things we have. It's a beautiful building, and, and I think that it's really important that the museum stays open. Question is, how do we do that? There's several things. The first thing is, when I reviewed the contract, I thought, why the heck did they agree to this? One of the things that they agreed to when they originally signed the agreement for the museum, not so much the visitor's center, that's, that I don't want to get to, but it's section 6.02. It's on page 5-18 of the agenda, and I'm going to read it. It's under Article 5, Operation and Maintenance. Lease shall maintain and repair the interior of the premises, including the heating and cooling system, gas and electrical facilities, the plumbing system, except for exterior plumbing, the interior corridors, directory equipment, whatever that is, restrooms and drinking fountains. Leasers shall be responsible for and bear the cost of maintaining the landscaping, maintaining the cleaning and cleaning the exterior walks and patios, and adjoining parking lot, and maintaining the perimeter wall around the premises, including painting and necessary repairs. Holy cow. This is, this is an historic building. It's very old. I was in the contracting business for years, and one thing that I did with my husband was restore historic buildings, and so I understand what they are, is they are a Pandora's box of maintenance issues. This is a city building, so I'm troubled that the city, that this lease agreement is burdening the museum with the, with the maintenance, such a significant portion of the maintenance of this building, which is owned by the city on the operators of the museum. I personally would like to see that changed. I think that we should, that that, the lease should be reviewed, and we should consider taking this owner's burden off of the museum. If you look at page 5-2, under Buildings and Maintenance, in 2010, and I'm assuming this is related to what I just read, we've had between 2010 and 2012, $50,000 spent by the museum on this maintenance. That's a huge chunk of change. So... The other thing is, and this, this is, I'm just kind of hatcheting this. Last year was the T-Bid, wasn't it, Scott, that we passed? It's 1% of the transient occupancy tax that the city collects goes to the Visitors Bureau. And I can't help but think that there might not be some way to kind of make this work, because also in this lease, the museum is required to run a visitor's center, and I can't imagine that that costs them nothing. I'm sure that there's a lot, quite, quite a bit of money related to having to operate that. There's electricity, there's paper, and then, of course, there's the volunteers. It's not broken down in this spreadsheet or this cost in, whatever you... It's not broken down in this spreadsheet or this cost in, whatever you call it, I'm sorry. But I imagine it costs some money. So I just can't help but think there's not some thing that could be done about that, that maybe that the museum shouldn't have some access to some of that money, that it could be helped, that the museum could be helped out in some way with that. So I don't know what the answer to this is. I don't have any solution, really. But I do feel that we need to review that lease, and we have to decide what our priorities are as a community. The trolley's a priority, and the Recreation Department's a priority of, to the tune of almost $1 million a year. And we're talking a deficit of 40, 47, and 60, pardon me, $61,000. And $61,000 this year, if you take, let's just be simple, they spent $22,000 on maintenance, let's just say 20 off of that 60, that's a $41,000 deficit. So is it worth it to our city, who feels that those other things that we're subsidizing to the tune of a million, is it worth it to our city to subsidize the museum to the tune of approximately $40,000 a year? And also renegotiate the lease and take the burden off of them for the building and maintenance of our building, a historic building, which is an extremely expensive thing to maintain? And I just don't think that should be part of their responsibility. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Laura?
Yes, I appreciate you guys coming down. And just, I just appreciate, first of all, the tour that, when you guys invited me, there's so much more that you guys do and try to connect with the community, offering to schools to come and use the library, and also have packets for them to take to educate youth. And I think it's something that, as a teenager, we take for granted, is there stories and the valuables that we just think are important and valuable. It's that simple. So I definitely agree, and I'm glad that staff offered to give you guys some money for the operation, operation costs. I am concerned, and like, I'm glad Councilman Clapp brought it up, of the future, how we could help you, a dialogue, and maybe reviewing that lease would be a good thing for us to engage the store, the museum, and talking to Greg and seeing what we could do. I am curious to see what other options of fundraising there is that you guys talked with Mr. Clark. It just would be good to start executing those, maybe those ideas. But just in general, I think it's, I agree with all my council members as far as this is, I think, a value that we should definitely support in our community. So thank you for your service. And I do appreciate the volunteers that come and help. And it does take a director to manage those volunteers, because it's impossible to do just with volunteers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith?
I think the museum is a very important part of the fabric of our community, and I'd like to get them out of this financial dire straits in some, you know, significant way. I certainly support their need for funding this year and all the ideas they have. And the general public has to understand that there are exhibitions all the time in the museum. It's not just, though I happen to like dioramas, but I love the Chumash Indian dioramas, but how many shows are there now, Michelle, a year?
Two to four rotating exhibits a year, and they last eight to 10 weeks apiece.
Right.
And we try to balance them between two history and two art, or a popular culture exhibit that would cover some.
Yeah, so if you haven't been to the museum lately, it's fabulous. It has come a long way, and I think it's a very important part of our fabric. And certainly, I'm in favor of clearing your deficit for this year, but also, I very much think some of your ideas for the future, and some of Michelle's ideas, are very important to see that we have a financially stable partnership with them.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Strobel?
I just want to, you know, whether or not we review the lease, it's up to council. But I agree with Councilwoman Clapp that on page 5-18, Section 6.02 is confusing, in that it begins, "Leasee shall," and then in the last part, it says, "lesser shall also."
You are right.
So it's confusing. I don't know if that's a typo or whatever. My understanding is that basically the museum is responsible for maintenance, et cetera, of the interior of the building, and the city is responsible for exterior landscaping, maintaining the perimeter wall. So that's my understanding of our lease as it exists. That's, other than the comments I've already made, that's it for me.
We, as elected officials, have a broad responsibility to the citizens of Ojai, principally for their health and safety. But the history and the arts of a community are absolutely essential. And I think that our museum brings both those aspects of the cultural viability of Ojai together. And there's some that would say that, in this day and age, when funding is being taken away from the public art and everywhere, from public radio to any funding for arts in general, particularly on a federal level, that we should only look to the private sector for funding of these types of things. And I disagree with that. I think that it's very important that we fund the museum. We can't risk the loss of the museum. It's integral to the health of our community. So I'm very much in favor of us providing funding to the museum. I think it's social responsibility for us to do it. And I think, as a council, we would be really wrong not to do it. It absolutely helps, adds to the health and viability of our community when we can support the arts and our history. So I'm very much in favor of approving it. And I support staff's recommendation. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Blatz, I'll make a motion. Should I include, should this be two separate motions?
It could be. I think the first motion was...
Let's make it two separate motions. Okay, I would move to include $25,000 in the fiscal year 2013-14 Capital Improvement Budget for repair of stucco drainage and termite damage at the Ojai Valley Museum.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that the council approve $47,299 of unrestricted funds in the deferred revenue accounts and $2,701 from the general fund account. Hopefully, that adds up to $50,000.
We'll make sure it does.
That's my intent. Approve that amount of money for the operation of the museum.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clark, did you have a question?
The city attorney and I had a discussion earlier this afternoon about specifying that the money go for expenses such as utilities and building maintenance and things other than staff. And so I think there's enough of those kinds of expenditures in the budget that we could accomplish that.
Yeah, actually, I was going to offer that. I went through this exact experience with my last client, with a museum, city-owned museum. It, I'll add, as part of the study we did with the Bowers Museum in Santa Ana, was that there's only one museum in the state of California that was publicly owned that did not have a public subsidy, and that was the San Diego Zoo. Lacpa, the Page Museum, the Museum in San Francisco, publicly owned, all had some level of public facility subsidy. And what we found it was, was in the building facility issues, as Councilmember Clapp mentioned, for two reasons. One is, that's what the public investment is, is the facility. And what happens in nonprofit groups like this with these facilities, if you have between, you have money spent on programming and money spent on janitorial or infrastructure repair, what doesn't get paid? Usually, it's the air conditioning, the plumbing, that type of stuff. And the other day, the facility that the public has investment in, you know, isn't maintained. So what we did in that agreement, we rewrote that agreement to provide basically that, we changed the "lessee" to "lesser," the language that Councilwoman Clapp was mentioning. And it does additional benefit for the city in that it keeps the city out of, and this is one thing I would encourage, to keep the city out of just funding a museum operations where you get possible entanglements with free speech issues and what's being, you know, what's being exhibited, and any content control over what the exhibits are, that should be in the hands of the nonprofit group and really, actually, because there's a lot of free speech issues that come into play with that, you know, want the city council in the position of any way, you know, interfering with that activity. So this public money goes to the facility, keeps the taxpayers' investment sound, leaves the operational needs to the programming costs to the organization. And what we could do in this year, since we're not, might be a good idea to consider revising the lease. But in the meantime, maybe direct that, you know, the first dollar is up to the $50,000 be invested, you know, spent on O and M and other facility costs of the city doing, you know, so we know that that money is going to places that we get the long-term return in terms of taxpayers.
Thank you. Will Mayor Protem Strobel modify the, amend the motion to reflect to reflect Mr. Fletcher's comments?
Add a dollar to it, because it's now $49,999.
Okay, let's go with my intent. My intent, and my intent was to provide additional funding for the operation of the museum for this upcoming fiscal year. Not every year, because I'm not comfortable with that. I'm hesitant to dictate how they spend it. They know better than we. Their books are open. I think we can go in and examine the books at any point in time. I don't know that I want to get into a, an update on the lease agreement unless we have So that doesn't really answer your question, but...
Okay. Well, the lease agreement's a separate issue. Are you saying that there's a legal requirement that this motion be made?
No.
In a particular way?
No. You can simply make a grant to the museum in a dollar amount, as long as they spend it at the museum.
Okay. Then I think that's...
That's my intent.
I think that's Mayor Protem's.
And add that dollar or whatever, to make it 50.
All right. We have an amended motion?
We do?
Well...
Oh, the dollar?
The dollar. Is there a second now?
Second.
I believe it was Councilwoman Smith seconded it.
I seconded it.
Yes? You seconded the amended? Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes.
I'd like to say something still.
Okay. Councilwoman Clapp?
I'd like to go back to my question about, because their lease does require a visitor's center. Right now, because of the agreement that we have for the TOT, 1% going to the Chamber for the Visitors Bureau, the Chamber doesn't have a visitor's center once they get them here. So I don't think it, I would like to know if the rest of council thinks it would be appropriate, you know, a worthy conversation to have between staff and the museum and the Chamber Visitors Bureau about the possibility of having some sort of agreement where some of that revenue that is being generated by the 1% T-bid going to the Visitors Bureau helps subsidize the visitor's center. And one thing to keep in mind is that, and actually, I'd like to know now what that 1% is generating. How much money is going to the Visitors Bureau now with the 1%? Do you happen to know that figure, Scott?
City, yes, it's 1% of whatever TOT does.
Okay. Do you have an idea of what it is, what it will be this year?
Conservatively, we estimated that it would be $200,000 a year. We'd have to go back and calculate what exactly it's been.
May I suggest that we've that become an agenda item for another meeting?
Well, I'm not done yet. Let me finish. So it's about $200,000, and our TOT is going up.
Yeah, TOT has been increasing.
And do you know what percentage to increase this year?
I don't know the exact percent.
Okay. So anyway, I would like to know if my fellow councilmembers would be interested in possibly having some sort of discussion like this.
So let me just interject a little bit here. The T-bid itself has a governance provision that was approved for a five-year period of time, and has specific things in its budget that that money's supposed to go for. In addition to the T-bid, the city makes a contribution of $50,000.
Correct.
I'm not sure that it's wise to mess with the T-bid because of the legal requirements when that was set up and agreed to through the public hearing process. But I think there's more freedom in how you allocate the $50,000, and maybe that we contribute above and beyond the T-bid. And maybe that's what you'd want to look at if you were to look at anything.
Oh. So we could say a certain percentage goes to the Visitors Bureau, and a certain percentage goes to assist the museum in operating their visitor's center, if that's how we so chose?
Well, I think the council made a commitment to fund the $50,000 to the marketing programs that the Chamber's working on. So I think they would have to at least be, the Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce and its Visitors Bureau should be in on the conversation.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So...
Just a thought. We're getting them here, but we don't have anywhere, we need to have somewhere for them to go to get the information. And we have that at the museum, and it's a great location. So it seems like it's kind of a match made in heaven. It's like inviting somebody to a party, and then they don't know where to go.
And actually, I don't know if this is the right time or place, but they, the Visitors Bureau has been talking about what they might do at that location to benefit that. So I think they do have some ideas on the table.
Well, I don't think it hurts to have staff touch base with the Visitors Bureau to see what their thoughts are. But I do know that the T-bid is a, has some legal restrictions to it that we really can't, we can't really mess with. You know, I suppose if there was a way to circumvent it where the Chamber was able to give some money to the Visitors Bureau or to the Visitors Center, it might be beneficial. But I, why don't you talk to Mr. Iker and put it on a future agenda, at least as a discussion item for us? Okay?
Mayor Blatz, could I just comment on that? I just, I also agree with you, it doesn't hurt having staff generate conversation, but also, just, it seems like there's already a relationship developing with Michelle and the Chamber, and there's already discussions. So I don't want to just interject and keep that flow from stalling. It seems like, you know, there's already going to be a mixer at the Ojai. And I did, when I took the tour, if I'm not, if I'm correct, please correct me, but I heard that the Visitor Bureau actually helps also with keeping the flow to the museum. So there's already a relationship there. I would just hate to stall. And I wouldn't be opposed of just finding out if there's anything we could do as a city to encourage that. But as far as telling them what to do, it's just, I...
Right.
And I agree with Councilmember Laura. There is, I am aware of more communication between the Chamber and the museum, and it does appear to me they are doing more, they're working together more, and I would prefer the city stay out of it.
Well, what's the council's pleasure? Do you want staff to communicate with...
Do you want staff to, to communicate with Mr. Iker or not?
Don't talk.
Hey, they're here. They can, why, why don't they say whether they want us to butt in or not?
Well, it's really not on the agenda.
Well, well, I'll comment. I think that they are working together toward a common goal that benefits the city. I don't believe they need my help at this point.
Yeah. I tend to agree with that.
I, I agree too, but that...
Your help is not necessarily, uh, part of this, our city manager and the head of the Chamber just talking about issues. I mean, that's a much more general topic than this specific help. So, I certainly would like to see the lines of communication between our CM and the Chamber and the, and the visitor's center and the museum open. Does it have to come to the dais?
I agree with that.
No.
Well, let me...
Only if we need to make a decision.
Let me give you my thoughts on it. The, the operation of the visitor's center and the museum is somewhat seamless. The overhead is there whether there's a visitor's center there or not. All of the help, and correct me if I'm wrong, is all, other than for Michelle, who oversees everything, is all volunteer help. If, if something is needed for the visitor's center, it kind of comes from the museum and through Michelle. So, in essence, by us approving this, we are, we're channeling money towards the visitor's center and helping the visitor's center because we're helping the museum as whole. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that if the Chamber and, you know, who's over the Visitors Bureau, and Michelle with the museum and the visitor's center have open and continuous communication, I think that's probably sufficient.
And if there's a problem, they can always contact their elected representatives.
Right. Let us know. But I don't, I don't really think at this point we need to get the city involved. Agreed?
Agreed.
All right. All right. Yes.
I'm so sorry. Refresh my memory. Are we or are we not going to be reviewing the lease? We are or aren't?
Well, you haven't directed us to review the lease yet. Maybe we should see how things play out this year, and if we still have problems at the end of the year, we may want to sit down and review the lease.
I, I don't see how we're not going to have an ongoing problem when, over the last three years, they've dumped $50,000 into the building.
Well, they've, they've, the $50,000 per year has gone into their operations.
No, and, under building maintenance, over the last three years, they've spent $50,000 in building maintenance. Mike, so we're going to, this is not going to go away. This is an antique building that's going to continue to have maintenance issues, including heating and air, which we know that's pretty darned expensive, and is plumbing and is electrical. So, I, 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 I think it's really important we, we review that to see if it's something that is really reasonable to request from, because it's going to be an ongoing problem.
Um, Councilmember Clapp?
Yeah.
I believe that you're referring to the fact that, quote, "The museum has a structural deficit of 50,000 per year." That I, it would be my understanding that that encompasses their entire operation, not just the structure.
No, I, I think what's confusing you is I added together what they spent over the last three years on maintenance of the building, and it added up to 50,000. Last year, they spent, our fiscal year twelve, or for the year of twelve, they spent 22. The year of 11, they spent 21, and the year of 10, they spent 6,000. And what I'm saying is, this is not going to get any less. And so, this is going to come back year in and year out. And also, is it reasonable to have them be required to maintain the city building, an historic building that is going to have tremendous amount of maintenance requirements? I, I'm, I just...
And it's my understanding that, that museum has a responsibility for the maintenance, painting, et cetera, of the interior building. The city already has a responsibility for the exterior landscaping perimeter wall.
They also have, the, the lease, he also has responsibility for heating and air, gas and electrical, and plumbing.
Right, those are utilities.
No. Heating and air systems, gas and electrical facilities, plumbing system. That is huge, huge.
If, if council...
I don't understand.
If Councilwoman Clapp would like us to review the lease agreement, let's put it on an agenda and review it. But I'd like to keep it separate from this action tonight, which is the allocation of 50,000 plus the 25,000 for structural.
That's fine, because we'll take care of the budget for this year, and if we bring it back to review it, I think, I think so, because I think that it's important we review it.
Why don't we do that? Let's put it on a future agenda to review it. For the public's benefit, the public should be aware that the city owns the building, and we lease it to the museum for a dollar a year. And I believe that when we lead, agreed to lease it to them for a dollar a year, part of the consideration for that low rental rate was that they were going to be responsible for a large portion of the maintenance of the building. Now, that's why it should come back before us to see whether we still believe that that's the case. Okay? All right. Anything else on agenda item number five? All right. Thank you for all your comments. Good luck. All right. Item number six in our agenda, another discussion item, is the establishment of the Building Appeals Board. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an action that the City Council directed us to move forward with back in May. Um, the, um, the, the state Building Standards Code provides for a Building Appeals Board and also a Housing Appeals Board. The Building Appeals Board deals with matters related to the building code. So, those would be appeals of actions taken by staff or substitution of materials or things like that. The Housing Appeals Board, which would also be a do, a function of this particular group, deals with maintenance of existing facilities, so that would typically be code enforcement type of actions. We're proposing that the, the board be formed with this ordinance, and if you look at section B on attachment A, we do say that members shall be residents of the city and that this shall have qualifications such as licensed architect, registered engineer, licensed contractor, local business owner, or real estate agent. And that's to reflect the desired makeup as presented by the Planning Commission. I would like to make a distinction between this and zoning matters. Zoning matters still would go before the Planning Commission. So, this board deals with building code and code enforcement.
Any questions to staff on this?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we keep a distinction. Um, I don't want a bill, a local appeals board to usurp any of the authority of the Planning Commission. I don't want those two confused in any way.
I totally agree, and I don't think they will be, because the Appeals Board will only deal with matters with regard to the building code, and the Planning Commission only deals with issues pertaining to the zoning code.
Okay. Now, that's where I'm concerned, that there's going to be overlap and confusion. This local appeals board deals with just that, appeals.
Appeals.
Planning, uh, matters will still go to the Planning Commission, not to an appeals board.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why I want to be clear.
Mm-hmm. And this is actually a creature of the building code. It's not a creature of our zoning code.
But, but they are going to have input on issues about adopting new codes, proposed code changes, alter, but that's not going to...
Building codes.
Yeah, building codes. They'll still have, but I, I can't imagine there being really an issue because their advisor, if they're coming, I think it's good to have their input on the new codes that are presented, and that, that will ultimately go to, I think, the Planning Commission. Is that right? Or...
They, no. Um, if the, 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 the adoption of the Uniform Building Code and the local amendments is a City Council action, typically, it doesn't go to the Planning Commission or to anyplace else. It goes straight to the City Council. However, we, because there was so much controversy this last time, we did ask Planning Commission for input, and they spent a lot of time reviewing it and providing input. But again, there's, the, I think it'll be very clear to us the distinction between building code matters and zoning code matters that go to Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, this, this is reference, this is, this goes into, into Title IX, um, which is the Building Code section. The zoning code is in 10. So, it, well, first, this chapter, codes, this chapter means the, the building code requirements. And so, there, there, they exist in two separate sets of our, sections of our municipal code, so no, no issue about that.
Any further comments?
No. I have the distinction fairly clear, and I think that this is a good idea, and it is an appeals board. Everything will go through planning. So, I, I understand Councilwoman Strobel, Mayor Protem Strobel's concern, but I think this document clarifies what, what the purpose is. And I also am very in favor of all of the, uh, members of this appeals board being residents of the city of Ojai.
I do have a question. It says here that it would be five members to be appointed by the mayor with approval by the council. So, it's not going to be like commissions where there's going to be an interview with the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
That's the pleasure of the board. That was the next thing of the commission or the council. That's the next thing I was...
If I could, Mr. Mayor, that's how our code currently reads for other boards and commissions. The mayor actually appoints...
Oh, that's right.
So, it's actually just mirrored exactly how the other boards...
I see.
And, and I believe that even if, even if the, the ordinance says that, I think that it should be, um, two people either interviewing or coming to a recommendation.
And would that be...
And I would recommend it be the mayor and the mayor pro tem.
And would that be in the procedure as opposed to in the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, if I may. No, that, that's a procedure that's been adopted. The mayor, the mayors have traditionally asked the mayor pro tem to sit with them in selecting board members. So, that's, that's the pleasure of the appointing person.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, might I ask if, since this is a, a new board that we're creating, perhaps each council member can recommend a, a name for consideration on the board?
I would welcome the council to recommend more than one name.
More than one name?
And I would recommend members of the public to submit applications to be on that board.
I agree. Thing is, as far as this...
Recommending?
I mean, um, how do I ascertain somebody's understanding of the California Building Standards Codes? I mean, I would almost prefer to have someone from our community, you know, from Rob's Department or somebody in on some knowledge about, what does this person know?
Well, we're not, we're not necessarily looking for members that have some preconceived, um, expertise in the building code. We're looking for people in the community, such as a real estate person or an architect, that presumably could have some sort of exposure to it, but more have a layperson's ability to analyze the code as it reflects to an applicant that has been denied something.
Well, it does say in paragraph 123, consistently with direction from the Building Standards Codes, the board members are required to have special knowledge of state building codes as applicable to Ojai. So, I'm not saying this is necessarily be a real estate agent. It might.
Well...
On six dash one.
The board member would presumably become proficient in the building codes, but you wouldn't have to be knowledgeable of the building codes in order to be appointed to the commission or to the board.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I drafted this. That actually, language comes out of the, out of the California Building Code, their, their requirements when, when you create one of these boards. Our, I think if, if there's a concern about that, I think I would recommend we slightly change this language to say each member shall become knowledgeable...
Right.
...in the California Building Standards Code. I think in the, in our meeting, the intent of the code. So, I, if I want to recommend this, I, I would offer that you, we change shall be to shall become.
Excuse me?
Yes.
On six dash three in the ordinance, it says, um, members shall be residents of the city and may have qualifications such as, is that, you want to leave that language the same or...
Because I, I, I've had the situation before where if we have to fill the real estate seat versus the contractor seat versus the, you know, it'd be, all of a sudden, your pool of applicants dwindles. So, it clearly expressed an intent by the council that you want these types of folks on the board. But I've had Board of Building Appeals where, you know, everyone has an individual seat, and we have to find a real estate agent. That's the vacancy, and now only real estate agents can apply for the job. And your pool gets really, really small, particularly in a small community like this. So, this allows you to give priority to folks like these, who are people, by the way, who are going to already have, who will probably be knowledgeable, will meet the other qualification of being knowledgeable on the building code.
Okay, so...
That's how you kind of, it all comes together.
So, are you, how, how's this going to be worded?
If, if you want to, if, if, if you don't want, if you don't want, they have this absolute mandate that each member shall be knowledgeable in the building codes, which means say it's a prerequisite to apply, we just change the word be to become.
Become, okay. I'm sorry, because... I'm sorry, I'm looking on six dash three.
Yes. Uh, paragraph B.
Okay, paragraph B, it says, "And may have qualifications such as..."
Right. But I'm talking about the first, the first phrase. Right now, it reads each member shall be knowledgeable in the California Building Standards Code.
First sentence of the...
First sentence of B. Nine dash one point two one four B.
Oh, and you said, okay, shall become knowledgeable?
Right. And that way, if someone actually doesn't, you know, if they're a real estate agent and, or a local business owner, and they, you know, you know, yeah, I'm kind of aware of building permits, well, then it doesn't disqualify them from being appointed to the board, as the mayor articulated.
And so, do you want to leave the may have qualifications the same?
Yes.
So, the only thing we'll be amending is the adding the become versus, and, and B. Okay. Yeah.
Any other comments?
I just want to clarify again. I mean, we keep saying this is going to be an appeals board, but it's not necessarily going to be just an appeals board. It's going to be an advisory, also committee, committee to comment regarding issues relating , um, new codes and just the building codes in general, right?
Yes. It gives, the code gives the building official, the Community Development Director, the authorization to call a meeting of the board. This board doesn't have standing meetings. This is one of the boards that doesn't have standing regular meetings because they don't have regular applications. So, meetings are called by the Community Development Director or the building official, specifically when an appeal is filed under the building code, or if they want, if, if he or she wants to get an advisory ruling. Another role they can play here is there may, there may be a controversy going on in the community, in the building community with an alternate, alternative materials issue, which comes up often in the building code. And so, uh, we can choose to call the board together to give it, in, input on, on some, some issue like that. Um, and of course, then when we process in the next round of, of uniform codes, they would advise on those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, again, I just want, I'm really aiming for clarity. I'm, it's really important to me that the council is completely aware of what it is we're recommending you do. So, I'm going to say again, when we talk about functions of a, a local appeals board, doing anything beyond that, that is outside the scope of my intent. A local appeals board, I want to be exactly that, a local appeals board. Now, if a group of citizens wish to form a group to give their advice or whatever to the Planning Commission, to the council regarding building, whatever, that's fine, but I don't see that as being a part of this.
And it's, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that.
Okay.
This is a city board. Its meetings are called by the city officials. They're based on, as required. There's no, they're not, they don't have a pen, they don't have a standing jurisdiction. They don't have regular meetings. So, it's really a tool for the city to use to allow builders and applicants to bring appeals of code interpretations from time to time.
If I may ask, Councilman Laura, where are you looking?
I'm looking at six, at six dash four. Um, section, under, section E two, it says, it says, "The building code, the building official requests advisory comments regarding issues related to this chapter such as potential dot..." regarding issues related to this chapter such as potential adoption of new codes, proposed code changes, or alternate methods and material."
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, that's outside of my concept, that number two, the building, if the building official requests advisory comments regarding, that's, that's outs-
I don't understand, what's, that's a standard role of all building appeals boards.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be part of our appeals board. I agree with Councilwoman Strobel and Mr. Laura, I agree that that's outside of the scope of what I, I intended this to be.
And to clarify, these are only building code amendments, not zoning code amendments.
That's the bailiwick of the Planning Commission.
No, it's not, it just says, member-
Right?
It, it's for a proposed adoption of new codes or code changes within the local amendments to the California Building Code, not the zoning code or anything else.
Okay, I'll be clear for myself, for myself. I've got about three comments. One, my concept of an appeals board was a board that would give the citizens access to a, an objective group. I didn't intend to restrict it just to building codes. I, I almost, my concept was almost like a grievance board. If, and that may just really blow it right out of the water, but if our building official needs direction on an interpretation of building codes, that should come from our city attorney, not from a group of citizens.
Well, if I could, the part of it is, they're providing, they're providing the technical input, that's why, again, why they tend to be people in the industry, experienced contractors, people dealing with the codes, they have the experience, that's, they're adding the lay or the professional, I mean, yeah, I still give the advice on what the law says, but if there's, if there's an issue about how we're applying in a section, this simply brings some industry people into the, into the process to give professional feedback on how we're interpreting a zillion technical building questions about.
Okay, this is far off field from what I had in mind.
So, what we're proposing here and what we've talked about in past conversations, both here and with the Planning Commission, is something that's a function of the state building code. The state building code says there shall be a local appeals board, and that local appeals board shall have these duties. And so, that's what we're bringing forward. We're bringing forward the thing that is talked about in the state building code. And there's also sections in the state housing code that says there shall be a housing appeals board or a local appeals board, and typically in a small city, those two boards are the same. And the duties that are called out in the state building code for that kind of a board, which you would be if you don't appoint one, is appeals of staff interpretations about the building code, questions about substitution of materials, those kinds of things. Also, appeals relating to enforcement actions on existing buildings when they're found to be out of compliance with the building code, in other words, code enforcement. That's what's called for in the state code for this particular board, and that's what we're bringing forward. So, if you want to do what the Planning Commission recommended and what a number of other people who were talking to the Planning Commission wanted to see, that's the board that's created by the state building code, and that's what we're recommending. If you want to have some other kind of a body that does some different thing, then we should make a distinction, and you should tell us what thing it is you want us to do that's different from what the state building code requires, and then we can figure out whether that's something that fits into the scheme of things and how we might do it.
Well, I believe I've conveyed my thoughts, so.
Well, we have, we had a choice. The imposition of the state building code has already been forced upon us. Then we had a whole rewrite of our building code. As part of the rewrite of our building code and the enforcement of the state code, this was part of that. That was, this has all been discussed by the Planning Commission, and this appeals board is a requirement of this process. Recommendation of staff initially was, we're not going to do anything about this appeals board until we take action on approving the state board or our new rewritten building code. And I felt it important to bring it before the council, to get this board in place before then, because I feel there's a need in the public, from the public standpoint, to have this process of this appeals board. But the things that are in this ordinance are mandated by the state to be part of this appeals board.
If you have an appeals board, we don't have to have-
No, if we could act, well, I think we do need to have an appeals board, and just like we acted as the redevelopment agency, we could act as the building appeals board. I'm not sure we want to do that, but, but we probably could do that.
Well, you have to.
We'd have to do it.
In the absolute, the code says.
Because we don't have an, I got you, all right. So, we're really forming this to have people who are educated in the building code to be the appeals board and make, as an advisory, because they really have, they don't have legal power, right?
Yes, eventually, if, if, if the building official requires, disapproves a plan or requires a change in the plans pursuant to a provision of the building code, and the applicant disagrees with that, they have the right to appeal this to this board, and this board's decision is final.
Oh, okay.
So, it's, so they're, they're evident when it comes, and these, these are very, these appeals are very rare, that's why you often don't have them, you know, something that's not uncommon, to not have these boards filled all the time, is because they're not that particularly common, but, but it creates, but they're, the idea is, it's, they're, that's why you have knowledge in the industry, because it's supposed to be a technical board. This isn't, this isn't the idea to give a lay opinion, this, rather, it's a technical appeals board by folks that understand the building code and the plumbing code and electrical code, so that they can, independent evaluation of the application of submission of the building code to a building permit.
That I understand, that means people really have a special knowledge of the building, not zoning, not any of the other thing. That's why I find it hard to believe a real estate agent would fit into that category, frankly, but maybe you have one who was an electrician once or something.
Well, they may have deal a lot with issues with building, with, remember, you're also doing housing appeals, they may have an issue with code compliance issues, and, and so they probably deal with-
But how does code compliance have to do with the building code?
Might be what, you know, when you're selling a unit and the property, you do a property inspection, and they find, you find deficiencies, and you have to process amendment, you know, corrective actions to fix wiring or fix structural issues or fix plumbing issues, you know, when you're buying a house, often it gets replumbed, they might, they might have actually a lot of experience in going through the process of permitting, they might actually have it.
Well, certainly, I don't feel qualified to be this special knowledge of the, of the building code, so, I mean, I would prefer to have another group, but, but council do it, but you're giving these, this board also final say on it, but if it's a very limited scope, which is the building code, and I think that's, that's appropriate. I think I hear concern from the councils, how wide does that make their powers, but if it's a strictly interpretation of, this is what this means, it's far better than I would have if it's just related to the building code and safety issues.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think one of the confusions was when we first started talking about having this appeals board, we didn't know that there was a mandate from the state of California and the California Building Codes to have this board. So, I think that's kind of where the confusion came in, it's like, we had this one idea, but now it turns out that there is actually a mandate that we were really unaware of, and included in that was this language, I guess, so we're kind of.
But I've listened, because I, you know, I haven't studied, you know, electrical-
And keep, keep in mind, without this board, staff's final decision is final.
Right. Well, no, they can appeal to council?
No, not when it comes to building code issues.
I don't agree.
I don't know. Has there been a case you can think of, Rob, either Rob, where that has, your, your decision was appealed to the council, though even though your decision-
Had to do strictly with the building code?
We haven't had an opportunity to use this board yet, but my understanding is if it's not appointed, actually, the city council is de facto, even though it's not stated in our code that the city council is the building appeals board, you are, because there has to be a, an appeal process for those types of decisions, set up that way in the, in the building code.
But prior to this mandate, where it wasn't required that you had an appeals board, then staff's decision was final.
That, that I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure the history on that.
I don't know if that's actually technically correct, I think pragmatically in Ojai, that was the effect. Folks may didn't perceive they had the right to appeal some of these decisions, because there was no known Board of Building Appeals.
Yeah, the experience that I've had, that I'll share with the council, is that this was, this board was a priority of the Planning Commission, when they were talking about the building code update, that was one of the things that was supported by the community that were involved in the process, and that was one of the key components, the local amendments that we brought very far through the process, but ultimately didn't get the local amendments adopted for 2010, but we're going to be, bring those back in 2013. And then the mayor, as he mentioned, just suggested we bring this specific item forth earlier than that, not waiting until this fall to establish this board, because there have been building code interpretations of late that there may have been good input from this board. And I think it's, it's always helpful to have more than one set of eyes and more than one set of experience to wrestle with interpretations, and that's the function that the Planning Commission can assist staff with on planning issues. This board would have that same advisory capacity for the, for, to the building official for building code issues.
Well, I'm getting more comfortable with this, and I see this as a good, a good thing for Ojai. It does not, as other councils say, meet what I originally thought we were doing, but within the scope of what you're talking about, I think it's a darn good idea.
Mayor Blatz, could I comment on those comments? I just, the reason why I kept pointing to this section six dash four was because I wanted to clarify whether council members or Mayor Protem Strobel's, I guess, request was being granted, and I thought that it wasn't, it was conflicting what she wanted. But I agree with you with saying that lately, there was, there's been issues about the building code. And I do not object to having them be an advisor, or having them comment and give suggestion to just strictly building codes, or codes, or just whatever it is, give their input. And I think it's a good idea with what we've been having, we've been having issues lately, and I think it's putting a burden on our Planning Commission, and, and I think it would clarify, I think for our staff, where, who it could go to, and would establish better just understanding of the rules and zoning stuff.
Mayor Protem Strobel?
Yes, I'd like to, I'm working with this. So, we actually have two tools. We have a local appeals board that deals with the building codes and is accessible to the building official for determination. And we have a second tool, which is when a citizen has a, twice did I have used this word, and I hate this word, a grievance with staff or however they were, then they have the option to meet with the mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Well, that, we, the problem-
Work with me here, because we're going to be here till I get this straight.
Okay, so, so one of, one of the things that we discovered, and we talked about on the 14th, is that if the mayor and the mayor pro tem are appointed to a standing committee, that becomes a Brown Act committee with notice public meetings and notice public hearings. And so, it was decided not to go that route.
Mr. Fletcher?
If I could, I apologize, if I could clarify, I advise the staff that if we create this, this two-person entity as a grievance board, it would be a Brown Act body. Now, that doesn't mean, it doesn't require notice public hearings, it simply means a posted agenda, and you could call it as a special meeting on 24-hour notice, send the notes to the, to the media. It doesn't necessarily involve a significant amount of noticing expenses, other than it has to be, you have to call in a meeting and make an agenda and post the agenda and go through the Brown Act process. That's the only thing I said, it's, and I'll defer to staff completely on the question of how much bureaucracy that creates of having to do an agenda for the meeting you have, that you have. You could do that, and it's just that it would be a Brown Act, because any entity created by official action of the council is a Brown Act body in of itself, so that's what you would do, you have to have a notice meeting of the grievance board.
So, I think, in your absence, okay? One meeting, the one meeting. Because the, the information that we were in, we were given was that it would be a Brown Act violation for it to go from the community development director to the city manager, and then to the mayor and the mayor pro tem, that it would go from the community development manager to the city manager and stop there. If we don't mind having to post an agenda for it, then presumably it could come to the mayor and the mayor pro tem for review.
Okay, I've got my head around this local appeals board, but what's still hanging out there for me, because I missed that stinking meeting, is-
It wasn't a stinking meeting, it was a nice meeting.
Is, we've had a group of citizens wanting some objective voice, so, and that's not going to be established. All that's going to be established is the local appeals board. Okay.
What if we have the ombudsman, have that be part of the ombudsman's responsibilities?
Okay, I'm really wearing everyone thin tonight. I'm hesitant to create a whole bunch of boards.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
And I had one concept in mind with a local appeals board. I now see that that concept is something totally different, and it's, it's a good idea, do we go ahead and adopt the local appeals board, which has to do with the building code?
Mm-hmm.
But then do we just forget about this other committee, and I'll call it a grievance committee? Do we act on that somewhere else down the line? What?
Well, we can bring it back at any time. I was under the impression that not only did we have to post an agenda, but that we had to, we had certain notice requirements of a regularly scheduled meeting, rather than a special meeting.
No, you, you don't have to, you don't have to have regular meetings of a standing committee. You just simply make it a committee of the council, like you have now, your finance committee.
Right.
You can create another committee, which would be this advisory-
Grievance committee.
Grievance committee.
Right.
And, and just, and just call meetings, you know, you don't have to have a standing committee, you don't have to have a standing meeting of that committee.
All right, well, then, I, I don't think we can act on that tonight.
Yeah, I was just saying, about, about to say that actually is on the agenda tonight.
I would like that to come back before us on the 28th, if I could then.
Hey, one more thing.
Yes.
Under the members and who should be on this, I don't understand why local business is on there. I understand licensed architect, engineer, contractor, real estate agent. Local business, I don't quite understand, but I would see adding retired planning director or something like that, but what, local business is not necessarily going to have any expertise or knowledge or foundation in the necessary knowledge.
All right, it's at this point where I believe the two concepts for me started getting cloudy.
Well, let's back up a little bit. It is a discussion item, let's see if anybody in the public has anything to say.
What's left of the process?
They all, any comment?
They all left.
They all left.
Dale's here.
Dale's here.
I'm here. What Mr. Fletcher said and what Rob Malane said is exactly the way I understand it. And I think it's real clear. It's not an uncommon thing. The state is requiring it, as I understand. And it would be a group of people, and they're, you know, I've been thinking about this for months, because I asked for this over a year ago. They're a whole group of people. And having a business person on there, it's not that every one of the people on that board, that each one of them would necessarily be an expert in building codes, but you would hear people come before you that have had maybe disputes or grievance or whatever it is. And you look at the code together. It's, I mean, I've looked at the code. It's not that hard to understand. And I work with building codes in my business. So do many people. And I think that having this appeals board is really something that we need to do. I would only ask that we do it soon, sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't think there is anybody else out there, so I'll bring it back to the council.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion. May I?
Yep.
Okay. Introduce ordinance number-
Eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine, which would create the Building Appeals Board and establish procedures for appeals to the board by asking the city clerk to read the title of ordinance number eight twenty-nine, and approving a motion to waive further reading of ordinance number eight twenty-nine, and pass it on to second reading. You have to read it now?
After a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
If it could be read, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, the motion includes revising the first line in subsection B of nine one, nine dash one point two and four, to state each member shall become knowledgeable.
Right.
There you go. Thank you.
Ordinance number eight twenty-nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, amending chapter one of Title IX of the Ojai Municipal Code related to creation of the Building Appeals Board. Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number seven, another discussion item.
Section nine one.
It's the selection of the 2014 through 2021 Housing Element Consultant. Mr. Malane, I believe you'll be addressing us on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we've had about a two-hour pause in between housing element cycles, because earlier today in the consent agenda, you approved on second reading, or adopted on second reading, the phase two of the implementation program. So we're done with cycle four, and now we're looking ahead to cycle five. And once again, we find ourselves with a really challenging timeframe, but a timeframe that's very important to meet, because we do not want to be subjecting ourselves to a midpoint review. We want to maintain an eight-year review cycle. And in order to do that, we need to have a housing element adopted by the council, not certified by HCD, but adopted by the council with a grace period essentially early next year. I think the exact date is in February of next year, but I would recommend that we don't wait that long, and we try to have something adopted sometime in January at the absolute latest. So, in order to handle this task of updating the housing element again, there's been, I think there's a lot of community awareness. Now, there's a lot of awareness at the Planning Commission and on the council on what the community's priorities are for housing, and what some of the things that we just didn't have the luxury of time to delve into for the last housing element cycle that we want to revisit. And we want to have another round of negotiations with the state on trying to get a housing element that better reflects the community values of Ojai. So, in order to do that, staff feels very strongly that we do need a housing element consultant to assist us, in large part because of the community outreach and the number of meetings that we're proposing to have, and the amount of input that we anticipate getting. So, we did recently go out for an RFP to get a housing element consultant onboard, and we sent that RFP out to three firms. All three firms responded. Those firms were John Douglas and Associates, Lisa Wise Consulting, and Veronica Tam and Associates. And I will say that these are some of the top firms in the state. They also have quite a lot of experience in our area. I had, in reviewing the proposals, I contacted most of the references for all the firms that submitted proposals. They had, almost without exception, very, very strong recommendations. So, on one hand, the city can't go wrong, which any of these three firms, I'm very confident would do a great service to the city. But, again, having more than one pair of eyes and more than one head involved in this, staff thought it was a prudent decision to convene a committee to review the proposals. So, we had the mayor and the chair of the Planning Commission and myself sat down, and we reviewed all three proposals. We ranked them. We looked at some objective criteria, which I'll just list briefly. The committee reviewed the proposals based on the quality, appearance, and professionalism indicated in the proposal, the thoroughness in response to the city's RFP, qualifications for similar work, and understanding of an approach to Ojai's small-town community values. And so, after we spent some time going through the proposals and met and discussed this a couple weeks ago, the committee was unanimous in recommending J. H. Douglas and Associates for the services for the 2014-2021 housing element. And, again, all three firms are very strong. Mr. Douglas had some leg up for a few reasons. He does have substantial experience and an excellent track record with housing element consulting in Ventura County and elsewhere in Southern California. He's got a lot of local experience. He has an excellent reputation and relationship with HCD staff, which is going to be critical in the process as we try to negotiate with them on a more community-reflective housing element. He is also, has a really good appreciation of the small-town character of the area. He's got a certificate in dispute resolution, which may come in handy in the public, the public process and involvement. And importantly, also, he was very responsive, he was actually the most responsive to the scope of work, and he was the least costly of all three. So, this is coming out of our general funds. We don't have redevelopment money anymore, so it is important. Cost was a consideration. And when the staff put together the estimate for this fiscal year, or for the budget, it actually is on last fiscal year, we thought that a total of $48,000 would cover both the housing element consulting assistance and the associated SEQA documentation, which is going to be a separate contract, a separate project. It's too early to go out to bid for that, because we need a draft housing element to have a consultant say, okay, we understand what the environmental impacts might be. And of the $48,000 that was allocated in the budget, or that's proposed to be allocated in the budget, about $32,000 of that was for the housing element consultant. Again, these are just estimates. The balanced $16,000 was what I thought we might need for the SEQA documentation. So, the ranges in cost that we got for the three proposals were between just under $26,000, which was Mr. Douglas's proposal, to a high of about $36,500, which was Veronica Tam's proposal. And that is excluding what staff is recommending, 15% contingency to deal with any unforeseen issues, any extra meetings that might be needed. It's fairly, there's a fairly high likelihood that there will need to be some use of the contingency funds. So, if you take Mr. Douglas's cost and you add the 15% contingency, he's still just under $30,000. So, it's well within the budget estimate that we have. But I will say that the other two proposals were not far off. It may cut into some of the SEQA budget we have, or it may lead to an overrun in the $48,000 estimate. But there wasn't really a lot of hesitation or dispute in the committee review. We all felt that that was the strongest proposal, and that it made the most sense to go with Mr. Douglas, particularly because of the cost and his qualifications. So, I did include in the staff report for this item, the RFP that we sent out, so the council could see that, as well as all three proposals. And it is your decision, we're making a recommendation, both as staff and as the committee, for John Douglas. However, you're free to go with a different consultant if you so choose tonight. But we would like to select the consultant tonight and authorize the city manager to start the contract, because as you may recall from your event, agenda forecast, we actually have a, our first meeting with the Planning Commission is your very next meeting. It's a joint meeting at the beginning of the meeting, and it would be very beneficial to have this person onboard, so that they can at least hear the input, if not participate somewhat. So, I will be happy to answer any questions, and I'm really excited about taking this next step and addressing some of the concerns that came up in the last housing element cycle.
Just to add to what Mr. Malane is saying, one of the reasons why I was very impressed by Mr. Douglas's proposal, in his cover letter, he states that there's new demographic data that we need to take into consideration, and that he'll also include a review of several key issues, including development standards in the SPL overlay, mixed-use development policies in consideration of an inclusionary housing program, which I think is really important. Then, as part of his actual proposal, he obviously had done a great deal of research into our prior deliberation, because it wasn't contained. And as much specificity in the other proposals, he specifically said the three-story height limit on some SPL sites. So, I was impressed that he had done enough research into Ojai to be able to identify some critical issues that we had discussed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I agree with you, especially, I think, the most troublesome part was if we can, was the three-story element. And if he has ideas how we could eliminate that in the next one, we, I mean, everything about his proposal, I thought, was superior. I guess the one thing I have concerns with, with the tight timeline, but, was the overall look at real environmental issues, such as the water supply, and what else was, you know, do we really have enough water? A lot of citizens have brought up, and I know that, you know, our local water purveyors say, oh, we have plenty of water. Golden State will truck it in from wherever. But this very tight timeline, I see, I see that it would be a very good thing, but it's also, as far as the environmental studies that we were thinking of doing, that's really not a possibility with this very tight timeline. I'm a very practical person, so I'm for hiring him and get going, but some of the long-range planning may have to actually wait for the next housing element cycle.
Any other comments by council? No?
Comment?
Okay.
I'd like to announce I have no questions.
Okay.
I'm ashamed.
I would like to make a comment. And that is, yes, we do need revised reports on our resources, but they are not going to happen in this next housing element. The time just is not there. But that doesn't mean we put them off until they also are not applicable to the 2021 element. We have to start doing the best we can to get updated reports on our constraints, our restrictions, our resources. We have to start doing that now, even though we won't be able to use it in this housing cycle.
So, that is a budget matter?
Yes, it is.
And there is a discussion of that in the budget document. So, I think maybe when we have our budget review on the 25th, we should get into whether you want to fund that or not. And I think there's some things to consider, so we'll make sure we discuss that as part of the budget.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I would like to comment. I did read all their proposals, and I think I agree with you with your, if we're going to select anybody, I think that stands out, the fact that he really touched on key issues that we had on the previous housing element. And even though I think that some studies, we might not be able to update them, I think we should still strive to do it. And I agree with Mayor Protem Strobel with going and doing our best and updating as much as we can, but that's all my comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clapp?
Lake Acetus is under 70%, and they're saying by November, it may be 60% full. And if we don't get rain this winter, we could get down to 50%. So, water is an issue, so it is something that we're going to have to address. We may not have to do a study on it. We may just take care of it. We may just run out. It's not looking good. And there's a lot of wells in the east end that are dry.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize the city manager to enter into and sign a contract for services with J. H. Douglas and Associates to assist in the preparation and submittal of the city's 2014 through 2021 housing element update, as outlined in the scope of work, at a cost not to exceed $29,808.
I will second that, but we didn't ask if there's anyone in the pool.
Dale, did you have any comments on that?
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. All right, we're going to adjourn as the Ojai City Council and reconvene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would move we approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. We are going to adjourn as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency, reconvene as the city council. Are there any reports of council members? Commissioner, or Councilwoman? No? Councilwoman Clapp?
Well, about the Acetus and having no water. The other thing that's really interesting, and I don't know if anybody's read about this in the newspaper, but the Fillmore Western Railroad's lease has been canceled.
Really?
Yes. And it's an unfortunate thing, but they have been not able to operate in the black. And this VCTC has been subsidizing them to the tune of millions over the years. So, they're having to cancel that lease, and it's unfortunate that that's happening. And I was at the Recreation Commission meeting as liaison, and I think it's really doing better. Everybody seems happier. Sophocles is great. Steve McClary's doing a great job, and I think that it's moving forward, and I'm real excited about that. And just as a suggestion, I was wondering if the city has looked into having an app and/or QR code.
Well, we got it on Facebook.
All right, well, perhaps staff could look into that.
Yes, just a thought I had the other day. We got to get into the 21st century.
All right. Councilwoman Smith?
Oh, young woman, I'm the representative of Ventura Regional Sanitary District, and so I went off to the biosolids waste facility. It's amazing. I mean, the product that comes out of here, there, it's like, it can be sold as fertilizer or whatever. And I think it's the only kind right now that's open. So, we have a lot to be proud of here as far as being very forward-minded in Ventura County as far as dealing with biosolid wastes.
Mayor Protem Strobel?
I have one comment, and it comes out of our interviews with all of the commissioners, et cetera. And so, I'm just going to make a statement. It's extremely important that our council liaisons attend their assigned meetings. If a councilperson has difficulty, please call me, and I will attend on your behalf.
That message came to us loud and clear, how much those commissions really do appreciate our attendance, and how, I wouldn't say slighted they felt, but how they felt that they were missing something when their liaison was not there. And I agree. I just have one thing-
Or call Mayor Blatz.
Yeah, or call me, and I'll attend. I just have one thing. I received the report, the 2012, 2013 grand jury report on the Ventura County library system.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I brought this because I thought that Councilwoman Smith might like to review it, as much as you are aware of the library and your, your commitment to the library. So, I'm going to pass that down to you.
Thank you very much.
And then if you'd just get it back to staff, I believe you already have a copy.
Yeah, we, in fact, we have to bring a response for you guys to approve, which we'll have at the next meeting.
Okay. And that's all I had. So, Mr. Clark?
I will read a note from Mr. McClary. He says that the revenues for men's baseball were five-hundred-and-thirty-eight in 1112, went up to four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve thirteen, and are projected to be seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen fourteen. So, I think the one issue that we were concerned about has been addressed.
I've been hearing it play everywhere. I can hear it from my house.
Mr. Fletcher?
No, sir.
Okay. Chief? You've been sitting there very patiently.
Very patiently. No. Things have been quiet in the city, knock on wood, but I, I see Chief Mike Milkovich back here with.
Right, I was going to point that out.
Ventura County Fire Department, so.
I will.
If, if you don't know him, that's, he's in charge now out here, and welcome.
Yes.
Can you come up to the dais, please?
Come on up now.
Yeah, I worked with Mike for a time at the air unit, so now he's out here. He's in charge of all the fire, fire stations.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council. My name is Mike Milkovich. I've been with the fire department for 24 years. I am newly, actually promoted, and I'm now your representative here in the city of Ojai. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to serve with you. If you have any need to contact me, Mr. Clark has my number, and I'm more than happy to talk with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, in fact, the council asked our city manager to arrange some meeting time, agendized item, where you would discuss fire danger for this year, what are the predictions, and what's in store for us with our terrible drought conditions, and what citizens can do. So, hopefully, you will schedule that to happen pretty soon.
Surely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Kenny, for pointing him out. Mr. Malane?
Thank you. I just have two quick things. I'm looking forward to recruiting our assistant planner, getting, getting that person onboard. We're, we're actually having interviews later this week, and we'll probably have an offer put together sometime next week. And they could start, depending on their availability, they could start by the end of this month, possibly. So, that's going to be a, a welcome addition to the department. And then I, I was glad to see Orval at, at Mr. Osborne, the newest planning commissioner, at the meeting today. I hadn't met him yet, but I did see his, his application resume, and they're very strong. So, I think he'll be a great addition to the Planning Commission. By the way, his, his first name is O-R-V-A-L, and I made that mistake in the email, so got corrected.
O-R-V-A-L.
Yes.
Orval.
No, no, it's O-R-V-A-L. And he'll, he'll have a very exciting inaugural meeting next week, because we have a quite extensive agenda. So, he'll, he'll hit the ground running, and we'll be looking forward to his expertise.
And Drown Avenue is becoming a mighty street. We have a city clerk, a council member, and two commissioner, and two commissioners on our street.
Really?
All within, all within three houses, and we can all wave to each other.
Street to be reckoned with.
We are a pack.
Mr. Grant, have anything else to add?
Mr. Grant, is Drown Avenue on your?
I'd be surprised if it wasn't going to be paved.
There's a lot of political pressure, but we have a pavement management system, which will make that an objective choice.
Believe me, I've had an itching phone dialing finger.
It's all decided by a computer for now. Speaking of streets, we did have ribbon cutting a few weeks ago, and Mayor Blatts was there for opening. And it was a bit of an embarrassment. We had a nice ribbon out there. We had this pair of scissors. Luckily, we.
That's the pair that I used, right there.
So, they're here, and we're going to.
It was kind of an embarrassment, actually.
And, but luckily, we have a, a resident from Ojai who felt it was an embarrassing situation, has donated a pair of worthy scissors. I want to introduce the donor. His, Suzie Mears has donated some scissors for the.
Well, the, all right, yes. The, the interesting thing is that the ceremonial scissors wouldn't cut anything. Those little scissors cut it just fine.
Very sharp.
But they weren't very ceremonial. But that one looks wonderful.
It's a donation from Suzie Mears, yeah.
Suzie, do you have anything to add?
Well, Donna Logan, who's been with us for seven and a half years, retired effective September, June 9th. And we're going to have a retirement luncheon for Potluck on June 27th. So, I just want to.
June the 27th?
And, and Donna and Brian will be invited.
For time?
Luncheon?
Yeah, noonish.
Noonish?
Okay, thank you. Our city clerk, anything this evening?
Actually, the county is gearing up for the August election for the water. So, I be working with them. They're going to have a drop box here. It's going to be a mail ballot only election, so hopefully, we'll get a lot of people to come in.
Okay.
Speaking of that, does anyone know what happened at court today?
It was, it was yesterday.
Yesterday?
And the judge found that the Casitas action was, was premature for, it wasn't, it wasn't ripe for a decision yet, that the, the election should go forward. And if there's any arguments, it shouldn't.
The Golden State action.
Yeah.
It was premature.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the Golden State action, premature, and that it should go to an election, and then any of the issues of law would be decided after that. I think it's subject to taking it up on a writ, but I don't think they will. Who knows? But it, it definitely was a, was a, a good decision by the, by the part of the judge. Anything else for tonight? Hearing nothing? We stand adjourned.